If we can all stand up to go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. So we'll call, we have Carol, Doug, Ed and Bob and myself. Also in attendance, we have Chelsea, Laura and Andrew. And I'll let you do the formalities later. So we have established a forum. Approval of the final. Yes. So approval of the final agenda and then this will be with amendment.
There was something that we got in the bail.
Do you have to take your microphone off on your iPad? We're getting double feedback from you.
What?
It's not.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know how to operate this thing.
So approval of the final agenda, and I know we had one item that was 11C. Is that what? Just go by memory. That was revised.
Yes.
But I didn't see anything that came with it to show that there was a revision. Did I miss something?
Yes.
The original that was provided was architectural plans. And we pulled those out and put the DO plans in so you guys could get more than just the architecture. And then the EOPC, the only update from the original to the new one was electrical. Okay.
Okay.
I apologize.
Motion to approve the final agenda with the addition of the 11C documents.
So we have a motion and we have a second by Carol, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. We'll go ahead with public comments. Chelsea, do you have anybody signed up online or in person?
I have several in person. First one is Fred Meyer regarding the dog park. A reminder, you have three minutes.
All right, Fred, if you can stand up to the.
Please step up for the microphone.
Oh.
Can't walk through. Okay.
State your name and your unity, please.
Brother.
Okay. My name is Fred Meyer. I have a problem with dog park. And I don't think it's all of.
My name's Andrew Goss.
Oh, okay. I don't think it's the guy that's in charge of it. It's dog park. I just want to let you know something. First of all, a little bit about me. My family used to raise and show Great Danes all over the country. Probably about 350 of them. I'm from Indianapolis, Sania. We got out of the dog showing business. Partly because we never made any money in it. But we had. My mom became an AKC judge. My dad became president of the Great Dane Club of America. And we. Lived on 40 acres. And I had to take care of these dogs before I could go to school in the morning. Now, when you have 55 Great Danes, that's a lot of shoveling. And that's what I had to do every morning before I went to school. Then I'd go to football and baseball practice or whatever season was. And when I got home. I had to do the same thing all over again. I love dogs, big dogs. And I've sort of been accused. Of damage that I did to the gate. At the park. There is no way in the world that I would do anything. I picked up pieces of it all over the parking lot. There's no way. There's. Who's one of our dogs? I mean, they're, we had really first class show dogs. Now I have a Saint Bernard. And he loves everybody and everything. And for him to be banned from going to the park. Is absolutely ridiculous. Everybody likes him. I would do nothing. Nothing. To keep that from happening. Some things have happened in the park. One of the. Hoses blew up. I replaced it out of my pocket. I go out and I pick up poop all the time from other dogs. I want the dog to work. I want the dog park to work.
All right, well, we, I guess if we have any questions, we'll follow up with you. So you're, you're just, so what is your request?
My request is to get me reinstated so I can take my dog back.
Okay.
And, you know, it's, it's one of those things that it's ridiculous. I mean, it's. I've seen so many things go on there and I try to cover up. What some of the other dogs do. Now granted, my dog's a big dog now, he's Saint Bernard. And I just, it just really bothers me.
Okay. All right.
And I, I think that, that. Somebody, Mr. Holland said that I confessed.
Okay, well, I think, I think your three minutes.
I did not confess.
Your three minutes are up. I appreciate your comment. If we have any questions, we'll ask, we'll go ahead and ask staff. So if you want to take the next comment and you want to.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out, what did you do, Ellen?
I didn't do anything wrong.
Okay, what, what is, what is?
Alleged to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all alleged, it was.
So, so Chelsea, I think the question is directed to you.
So it's my understanding, Chelsea O'Reilly, District Manager. It's my understanding that Mr. Myers was approached and there was some discussions. And there's been tampering at the dog park, specifically tape placed on the mag lock. We've had a lot of issues at the dog park lately. That's just one of them, but it's my understanding that it was admitted that the tape was placed by Mr. Meyer on the dog park. And therefore the revocation of the permit.
But what does the tape do?
Leaves it open.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
That's not true.
As I understand, as I understand, as I understand it, and I thought the mechanism was broken to begin with.
It, we had it up and running for a very short time, but it is, it is still broken now as of last Friday. So we are manually.
But we're not saying he broke it.
No.
Okay, so putting the tape on regardless of who put the tape on, what did that, what did that do to a broken gate to begin with?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't break the gate. What it does is it prevents the door from sticking so anyone can just open the door and come in. And because it's the dog park, people pay to use the dog park and they have carts to give them access. They're supposed, it's supposed to be exclusive to the people that are paying to use it.
Okay, and, and you're saying that you did not put the tape on the, the deal?
No, I, a comment that I made to Mr. Holland was that we wanted to be able to get in there. And he interpreted it as I wanted everybody to be able to get in there. That's not true.
Well, I think the issue comes down to, did we have somebody see him put the tape on the deal?
Well, we have the cameras over there. Was Tim able to review the cameras?
I didn't put any tape on there.
That's, no, just wait a minute. Did, did somebody, we're, we're making an accusation here that he did it, which was the reason that we took the deal, made the decision. Do we have a picture or something that shows evidence that shows him putting the tape on the lock?
No.
And why did we do what we did?
Again, because Mr. Meyer, again, I was not there, but I was told that it was admitted that he placed the tape on mechanism.
Sounds like somebody got a story mixed up here.
And it's hard, it's difficult because that person is not here. So I don't think at this point.
Who's the, who's the person?
It will be Parks and Rec Director.
All I want to do is to let my dog go back there. I take a cooler full of ice.
If we, if we had a picture, if we had a picture of him and/or staff saw you doing it, that's one thing. But you're saying that you did not do it.
No.
So the, I actually had a conversation with staff and staff, what staff has told me, and I mean, he's not here. That's that he observed, he was at the parking lot, he observed him doing it. And then he stopped and he went to speak with Mr. Meyer regarding that. He also had a bucket with additional like tools and items. So it was more than once.
Oh, no, wait a minute.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, let me finish. And then to Chelsea's, the dog park wasn't working. We get inundated with emails about getting the, the gate to fix. We finally were able to fix the gate on Friday. Within days, this happened. So it was fixed on Friday and then within, right, days on Monday, I believe.
It was operable for a very short amount of time and then it hasn't been working since. Not, not, not because of, not because of the. No.
Can I say something, please? I didn't, I took tools into it because the hose was broken. I already replaced one of them. That's the, on the, excuse me, the other. Uh, part, the, the hose on the, on the water faucet wasn't working. And I brought another hose to replace it. And we couldn't change it. And there was a bunch of people there trying to change it. We couldn't do it. That's the only reason those tools were there.
Okay, so then, so that's another thing that we had conversations regarding this. That residents and users are not to perform anything at the dog park. There's contact staff and have them do it. I know Tony, we had addressed this last year and I believe the year prior, because it is a liability from, you know, making changes to the fencing, making changes to the benches, making changes to anything. We are to notify staff and then staff is to do it. And that's how we hold them accountable. So going forward, I guess, an, an email, I would suggest go out to all users. They are not to perform any repair services, anything. If they have a recommendation they would like to send, absolutely send it to us. But we need, we as a district are responsible for operating the dog park and we are responsible for the maintenance of the dog park. So that's what I think the message is. Regarding wanting to make a decision right now, I would like to speak with Tim again. And I know we do have video surveillance there. I think, you know, just giving us a few more days, that's what I would ask the board, given us a few more days to come in and then making that decision.
Well, what's the term of this, uh, this penalty?
Revocation of his access, which it has been, it has been removed.
It's a permanent revocation of his dog.
Oh, that's bullshit. That's ridiculous. Good Lord. We, we have people driving down Gateway Boulevard going 100 miles an hour and we don't do a damn thing.
And just, and for the record, I'm sorry, which community do you live in? I don't think you said.
I live in Westminster.
Okay, so you're, uh, okay.
So my dues is a lot higher than everybody else's. My fee's $135 a year.
Yeah, okay, because you're not, you're not a Gili resident, okay.
Right.
Right.
Oh, but I've been going here for a long time.
Okay.
I, I would make a motion that we take and. Delay till we have the meeting with Tim within seven days to get a verification of this. But the term of this deal will be up in seven days.
That pardon?
This penalty, this prohibition is up in seven days until we talk to our person. Then we'll reconvene on what's going on. Unless somebody's got a smoking gun, my deal is, is that we're kind of out on a limb here. I don't know.
I mean, I, I haven't done anything wrong.
Yes. Excuse me, I have a turn.
The board has the ability to take action on this if it gives the opportunity for the public to comment. I think we should take it up today.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just, I, I mean, I, I don't think we personally need a motion necessarily. I think we let. Your direct staff to do the research, do it in a timely manner. And I think we can give them direction. Let's have it done within, within seven days. I don't know if we necessarily.
I don't, I don't understand this. If, first of all, if this was going to be, I'm taking this was not on the agenda or anything to be discussed. I knew it was coming up because I got an email from somebody probably you know, that's a friend of mine. And if this guy, if this guy tells me it's black, it's black. And if he tells me it's white, it's white. Former fighter pilot for this country and I believe everything that man says. And my, my thing is that there is too much here that I, if it's that important, I'd like to have our man here sitting there. I saw him do this.
Exactly, so.
And if he's not willing to say, I saw him do this, that don't get it.
So, so how about we postpone making a decision on reinstating his card until we talk to staff? And then Chelsea can give us a recap of the conversation and we'll make that decision then. And that is, and that will be within the seven days.
And even, even if it would come back, what, what is the, the, the death penalty? I've never, I've never heard of anything such as that.
All I wanted to do.
You know, 30 days or something like that, but gee, when they Christmas, we got people doing stuff that we look the other way.
All I wanted to do is let my dog run and play with his friends.
Okay, so I think Chelsea, you get direction and we'll, you follow, you follow, yeah, I know.
I will follow up with the report.
All right, thank you.
And I want Tim's deal that he saw it in writing.
Okay, so.
In writing.
The next.
He's not willing to put it in writing then and suffer the consequences, that's his problem.
All right, next I have Harvey Charter, Dog Park Issue. I assume it's the same. Reminder, three minutes.
Okay, how you doing? I'm a continuation of Fred. I've lived in Gateway. I bought my house in 97. I've been here since February of 98. I've been to the dog park before there was a dog park with a few of my dogs. Always been there. Of all the people I've ever met, this guy right here has done the most for the dog park. He's contacted through one of the people that kind of represents us. He's going to donate some sod to help out down there. Okay, he couldn't do enough. Now, there's a lot of therapeutic value of the dog park. You've got a group of a bunch of veterans primarily, post-traumatic stress, the whole group. We have the old Fodges Spencer that we sit on. Jay is one of them. He's having a procedure or he wouldn't have been here today. And absolutely, it's, it's disgusting that dog park gate has been broken. Okay, before Ian, way before Ian, okay? Whoever is responsible for it is not doing their job because there are other companies around that can do it. Okay, we, you have your soccer field, people come in and walk out without chairs that are supposed to be in the park only. Okay, you have people that don't belong there. The gates aren't locked, they're open. The tape was put there because we got in the, I didn't put the tape, I was not there that day. I wish I was because I would have recorded everything. But the bottom line is that the tape was there because the gate locked. And the keys would not work. So we got it open and it was with them, they, they put the tape on the gate so people that belonged to the park could get in and walk their dog. Now Fred has been, but his dog has not been. I'm going to bring his dog to the park because it means a lot to him, to the dog. And this is therapeutic value for Fred also. Okay, so you guys are really, you had the right word and I'm going to quote myself, it's bullshit, okay? And it should not be tolerated. You're going after the wrong people, but get the gate repaired. There's no excuse. Too long, no excuse.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whatever you have next.
All right, Bill Cirico, PPCA, item 11A.
Thank you, Bill Cirico for the Pelican Preserve Community Association. But actually, I'm, I'm here today at the request of Deborah Gentry, who's the president of the Prado at Pelican Preserve Property Owners Association. Who asks you to deny the developer's request to release the developer performance bond for Prado. The POA, since it was turned over from the developers to the residents, has been involved in a 558 dispute with the developer. That is alleging that they have. Deficient construction of groundwater collection system that ties into the district's ponds and flowways. And the developer has admitted liability and responsibility. But over two and a half or almost three years now, they've been unable to reach satisfactory agreement on how to satisfy the corrective action. The POA believes that the release of the bond would allow the developer to flee the coop. And have no pressure on them to come to an adequate resolution. So they're respectfully asking the supervisors to deny the developer's request. Thank you.
What's, what's our engineer's position on this?
I don't know that your engineer has been involved in this. There have been professional engineers hired by the POA and by the developer. And everybody admits it's wrong, needs to be fixed.
I'm assuming that we had to have, we have to have a engineer's report to.
I, I think Tony's over there waving, saying that it's on private property, it's not on the, not on the district's property. So I'm not sure what he's going to say.
Madam Chair, I don't like when someone pretends to understand what I'm going to say.
I just apologize, I didn't advance.
If, if, if the discussion involves an internal privately owned, privately conveying stormwater management system, that's different than what's at issue in this matter. This is an issue with regards to the district issued an approval for infrastructure deconstructed in Prado. Requested a performance bond way back when. In 2018, there was an acceptance of the facilities with the reduction to a number. And the developers coming forward and asking for full release of the bond. The engineer and Stephen can tell you his opinion as to the condition of the district's assets and facilities. If there are other assets and facilities that are part of the district's infrastructure that are in dispute, either by the developers, engineers or the Prado retained engineers. As part of their 558, 558, the defective installation design construction of improvements to real property. If they are having that dispute, my knowledge, neither the district, myself, the district engineer have been provided a copy of any of the reports, any of the materials, any of the documents associated with that 558 action. Which means it's a dispute right now between the association and the developer. And, and if they want, they being the association and/or the developer, want to share their engineer's reports with the district. The district ascertain whether that implicates the district assets or facilities, that's one story. We have not yet received them. If it's been going on two or three years, I don't know when the 558 demand was made, if it was made this year, two years ago, one year ago. So I'm just sort of laying out what called a 50,000 foot view of it.
All right, from, from my perspective. Yeah, we got sort of the buy off, the big picture buy off from. Petrotac on the community. But that doesn't mean that there weren't areas and incidents that were in dispute between the residents, the homeowners association and developer. Does their work and he's been well documented. They went and hired their own engineering firm to do it. And yeah, I agree that we, we're coming to this right now. We are a bit late. However, everybody got the copy of Deborah's letter, Deborah Gentry's letter should be in front of you. Everybody got that, right?
I did not.
I did not.
I have not.
I have not.
Oh, well. Okay, you'll have it where you leave here today. I thought I had asked that everybody got a copy. If you did not, you will have it today. But the point of this today is that we are, my opinion is we should be supporting the community. Because there are parts that are clearly ours, some of the, the swales and things and drainage. And it's all identified very, very clearly in the documents. So the action we have to take today, in my opinion, is we deny the North their request. We hold on to the funds and we encourage them to resolve these issues for the community. We're the last leverage the community has.
And without knowing what's in that communication. Again, the purpose of the bond was for the district assets and facilities.
And these are district assets. There's others, but there's districts.
Yeah, and that's, and so the, I think that if the boards of the mines that they table, not deny it, because it's, it's to table it to the next board meeting, give staff.
That's fine.
And district engineer and us an opportunity to review that. But if it's just a summary, I guess, without seeing the full 558.
This has got the engineering report to it, it's got it all.
Okay.
But was this, was this bond inclusive of the work that they're talking about?
We don't know.
He doesn't know, he hasn't reviewed anything.
And answer is yes, there are portions of the work that are inclusive.
Because I can see if it's not, then we might have.
We're not talking about all new things. And this came about because, well, what I knew, we were looking at releasing the bond. I called Deborah and said, you know, here, here's where we are, as I frequently do. Do you have, I said, oh yeah, we got a whole bunch. So I asked for it, she sent it to me. I'll make sure that we, I thought, I, by bad, but I thought every one of you had this. It's printing right now.
Okay.
We will all have it, but table it till the next meeting and you will clearly see as I have. We need to support the residents.
I think the, I think the POA would be entirely satisfied with, with tabling it until your next meeting. So you can review the documentation they provide.
Yeah, and the recognition is that the bond, the, the bond amount is pegged, the original bond amount is pegged to an engineer's opinion of probable costs at the time. And then there's a table with an allocation of what those costs are and how that total number comes up. So to the extent, I'm just, to the extent that the bond included aspects for utilities, water, sewer, road, landscaping and other infrastructure. I'm just, I can't recall the exact infrastructure and drainage, then you have different components, different amounts. And so that would be part of the analysis also. Looking at the engineer's report that was prepared for Prado by Stephen and myself and seeing what components are the district's component? And what's the dollars attributable to that, I think. And if, and if there are still issues as to those components, then the board's wall within its right to say.
The items in dispute, which include our items as well as some others that aren't in the bond.
Correct.
Are about $200,000, $205 total. So, okay, let's look at it, we'll table it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'll report that back to Ms. Gentry, thank you.
We table it when we get to that agenda.
Yes, we will.
Okay, good point.
We have, go ahead.
And the last one we have is Rod Senior. I don't know what he has, it just says non-agenda.
Don't start the clock until I handed this out. A sheet of paper for everybody. The first gentleman was here for 12 minutes, so please just give me a break.
Rod, we like you.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I've got it pre-documented, so I shall try and stay within the time. That's an important subject.
One page.
One page.
One page each, yes, same page. In 2015, you'll all remember the Royal Palms, debacle at Stony Brook end of Gateway Boulevard. And we relocated those Royal Palms to the right of way, buying ourselves 10 to 15 years before road widening. Which was the time span given to me by David Loveland at the time. So we thought it was worth moving those trees, they'll have, they'll have to go in the end. Hence the road widening reference in clause 16 of the Hold Harmless Agreement that you're looking at. But then came the roundabouts. On May the 21st, 2020, Chairperson Margaret Feinberg, she was here, she's gone. She, after, after a five zero board vote, wrote to Commissioner Pendergrass, making a great case for traffic lights at Griffin. The county did not heed and proceeded with the roundabout that started this week. Because of the unlimited blanket indemnity that the district provides to the county under clause 16. These two roundabout projects are costing the district $2 million out of our enterprise fund to move and remove those water and sewer water pipes coming out of our water bills. Clause 16 requires the district to move and remove water and sewer lines and associated improvements at no cost to the county. This is unjust and it's unreasonable. And it's out of keeping with inter-local agreements that are meant to be written and carried out in mutual, mutual good faith. Notwithstanding this unreasonability, this indemnity clause has got no monetary limit and should be challenged. Florida statute 725.06 imposes a commercially reasonable monetary limit to be enforceable. Our exposure is not insurable because the county will fully and intentionally is building these roundabouts. It isn't a question of errors or negligence or omission. And therefore, because it's not insurable, there is no imputed monetary limits set by insurance. I have shared this whole harmless agreement with Cheffy Passidomo, which is one of Florida's top litigation specialists, based in Naples. I was successful in getting our homeowners' long-term Comcast agreement voided by Cheffy Passidomo in 2013 by this firm. Using the good services of Lou DiAgostino, who has been selected by his professional peers as Florida's elite super lawyer category from 2008 to 2023. Ed will attest to the excellence of this guy's work if he would, he joined me at the time. Lou thinks we may have a case and has conducted a conflicts check and is clear and keen to proceed to do exploratory work on behalf of us all for a sum of $3,000 to $5,000. I would appreciate the board moving to engage this firm for a sum not to exceed 5,000. Carol and Bob, I know that you probably don't have a dog in this fight because I assume you pay your water bills to the city. But the electorate in Gateway put you on this board and they're, they're the ones who need your help. I'm coming to the end. Since Tony was instrumental in drafting this agreement with John Friedema now retired, it wouldn't make sense, in my opinion, to ask him to challenge his own agreement. But because Tony always acts to protect the district, that is us taxpayers, I trust that he would be okay with Cheffy Passidomo taking an exploratory look into researching the statutes, case law, etc. into researching the statutes, case law, et cetera, on behalf of us all. If we turn a blind eye, the county can and will go on and ad infinitum with road widening, traffic calming devices, and anything else it decides to do on these roads. And we are left holding the bag to relocate the underground utilities every time. It makes no sense and must be challenged. If we can get clause sixteen voided or deemed unenforceable, then the county has no leg to stand on and we can send them a bill for two million dollars and avoid any future exposure. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
I don't have anyone else that signed up. There's no one in the chat, and there are no additional emails or faxes that you have not already seen. All right, thank you. Local achievements and recognitions. Do you have anything? The board have anything? Advisory committees and items to report. Ponds, Pelican, do you have any?
Well, I I asked that the pond report that was internal to their working group just be distributed to us. It's kind of a recognition and an achievement, but the report is quite comprehensive, as you'll see. Done all with volunteers. They walked around every pond in the community and made notations about what the conditions are on the ponds, whether they need a point repair or whether they have a scarfing problem, whatever it might be. But I was very impressed by it, and I just wanted to pass it along to us as a total, so we can see the things that can be done.
And to add to that, this is Laura Leroy, Assistant District Manager. At the P P E C meeting, they also saw this report and they directed me to request a task authorization from Tetra Tech to validate what they found in those reports and then help them decide what next steps will be for the ponds in Pelican. Similar to what we did in the district.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the process, quite fundamentally, is the group went out first. They hit what they thought was key points. Now they need to have that validated by the engineering company.
Correct.
And then lay out the plan, however, number of years it takes to fix, but those things are.
Okay, so right now they're just asking for Tetra Tech to go out there and.
Well, they already, we don't need to do that.
The P P E C asked me to get a T A from Tetra Tech for a cost for them to validate the finding of the pond.
We don't have to do it.
Yeah, the board doesn't need, it's just informational only.
Just information.
Well, you know, just to be safe, in case down the road, Bob, why don't you make a motion?
To.
To ask Tetra Tech to.
I I already have.
Yeah, it's already done.
We took care of it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
They got the money. We're good. This was just information.
P P E C directed staff or asked staff to do that, so I I already took care of that and asked Tetra Tech.
They asked P P E C.
Stephen and I have been exchanging emails, so.
Okay, so then I guess just a.
It's an F Y I.
It's a feedback. Okay, well, if.
And then.
Item number seven, if it's an F Y I, then that, because this is staff recommendations. So that would, if you read it, that's what you needed. So if it's just an F Y I, just let us know.
Okay.
And just to add one more thing. Once Tetra Tech has verified and once they have a plan, then the idea is that because right now they are moving to finish the last of their big ponds projects, and they're in the eighth year of the eight-year project, so that they would be able then to move this type of issue, these type of projects in with that money and not have to raise taxes or anything like that.
That's.
With no impact to the taxpayers, but just keep a steady, a steady workflow on the ponds so that we're always on top of them rather than falling behind.
And part of that, I mean, just to affirm that, is that they are getting near the end of the Downspout Initiative, which has been very, very costly. We knew we had to do this sooner or later. Last time we did it, I think it was fourteen thousand eleven to fourteen, I'm right.
I don't know.
Yeah, and so it's appropriate. The good news in all of this was that the ponds that we have maintained, meaning the ponds that we retrofitted, as well as the ponds that have a good maintenance, a good littoral barrier, they are not part of any problems. The littorals, this is real world experience, they really, really save the erosion issues.
Question.
Yes.
So. Bob, you, you always look at Pelican with some of these committees because you guys have had them in place for quite some time and they're really well ran. And it seems like there's a lot of thought that goes into what the committee's roles and responsibilities are. I think we've been talking for quite some time around trying to emulate some of that structure that Pelican has within within Gateway. To me, the ponds are one that I think is really critical. When we've we've passed a resolution to be able to stand up a ponds committee and things of that nature. But how much capacity, like if you look at Pelican, that committee, how much time do they spend doing the task that?
A lot of time. They spend a lot of time. These are volunteers, probably about twenty people now, twenty. There's five core members and then there's probably five people from everyone of that.
Yeah.
Maybe twenty-seven or so.
And 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 to your question as far as emulating Doug, the groups, not only ponds, but safety and security and landscaping, the groups are struggling, struggling with adherence to sunshine laws. That has been a great inhibitor of quick decisions.
Yeah.
Quick conversations.
Yes.
So we are working with staff and with Tony to see if we can come to a reconciliation.
Well, I get, my point was.
But I think the the work, the work product that they have produced.
That's great. And that's what I'm saying. That's.
Phenomenal.
Yeah, so I.
And and it's mainly because they care.
That's exactly right.
They care. It's our ponds, it's our roadways, it's our safety.
Our residents really care.
And they really, really care.
So.
And I think it's the component of caring.
Henry's tired. Henry's tired. They got the time.
They got the time. Well, my point is, how do we take?
We're old.
How do we take Pelican ponds? And I was really trying to get to capacity, you know, is there, is there, is there any capacity to expand their scope, you know, outside of Pelican into Gateway? And I'm not saying, you know, that group, but how do you build out a similar structure within Gateway to give staff some additional support where needed? And we'd have to, you know, draft that out. But you've got a group that has been in, been in existence for quite some time.
Yeah, fifteen or sixteen years.
They've already stumbled across the, you know, the challenging pieces. I think they're very knowledgeable. How did we do a knowledge share transfer to building out a group in in Gateway? And have some overlap, right? You have a portion of that group training another group and.
They would be very, they'd be very willing to do that, that portion. I wouldn't speak for them, say they'd want to take over responsibility for the pond. However, they'd be very willing to enter a group over here.
And I guess what I would just ask probably Chelsea and staff is where could we adopt practices from Pelican that would be advantageous on the Gateway side? Because we're always talking about resources and and it takes a lot to walk those ponds and do thorough checks and doing all that stuff.
Especially to the detail we got here.
Right.
House members.
So my only point is if there's opportunity, let's look at it. And I would lean on Pelican's group to help, you know, build a similar type function where it makes sense. And maybe we just, we, you know, really understand the scope, you know, we'd limit it, you know, because we don't, wouldn't expect a group coming and do everything that Pelican ponds is doing, and we may not need it, but.
And it's early formative days, Doug, because they could function as a work group, there was a lot of latitude in communications and meetings that are currently not available to a sunshine law adherence subcommittee.
Okay, I just thought I would go out there because I I think it's really good stuff. And we've spent way too much money in ponds for us to not have the highest level of accountability. And if that could be a shared service between staff and residents, it makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Chelsea, one, do you, okay, so overseas stormwater right now.
What do you, like complaints?
The report that's provided by the vendor.
L does. Her stormwater specialist, which Andrew, now that he started, I'm sure he will be included on on that.
Okay, so if I make a request to see what is being reported by the vendor, I should have a report on a monthly basis because that's what's required under the contract for them to do reports on a monthly, not L.
The vendor, the vendor provides, yes.
Because we do have this now. Are we talking about the same thing? I was looking at the same thing. I don't know. So I guess I wanted to see what we are now. What is the vendor providing us, you know, proactively, like, hey, I saw this when I was treating this? And in addition to what L should be looking at, in addition to what residents are reporting, so it should be a fairly, you know.
That's my point. You've got three levels of accountability, then there's accountability, staff, and then.
So that's my, I liked it when, you know, staff was like, L would have come in and reported on the ponds because we're able to look at every single one, and I know those are compiled by her. But then, you know, the vendor are required to do that, so I wanted to see what that report looks like. Because I know in the contract, also, if I'm not mistaken, it does say that we can tailor to the reporting as we feel the needs. So then we would mimic Pelican Preserve reporting style to, and just give that to the vendor because that wouldn't be any changes because it is in the contract. That is up to us to develop what we wanted them to tell us. Does that make sense? So.
I don't want to cloud the waters, but you got to understand that when the vendor performs a service for a pond in Pelican, generally speaking, there's a pond's representative there with him. They can't make decisions, can't even make a recommendation, but they can report observations now, and they do that. So, you know, when you get that level of involvement over here, when people are care enough about their pond to participate, then it'd be halfway where you want to go.
Well, if we want to take it to to another level, in where we have core vendors and where we have a large investment, I would say that we should have a quarterly review or at least a report where we have mainscape, we have our ponds vendor, we have, you know, our core, that we spend a lot of money. They come in once a quarter, present in front of the board, their review of what they've seen, what they've done, you know, the state of that, and it would be vendor. We would have, you know, staff being able to comment on it. And then, and then it would be in a, in a public forum. So to me, that's, I mean, you would do that in any, any organization. So it's something we should consider as well.
Are we saying that our contract with our vendor is supposed to be pointing out on a monthly basis a report of non-compliance issues related to the ponds?
I don't know exactly what the specifications that they are required to report. Top of memory, I remember new erosions, new washouts. I know those are.
We're about compliance with our standards.
Yes, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's everything that is out of compliance with the development order plus the Gateway standards. I don't know exactly how it's forwarded, but I do know it is there.
L is intimately familiar with what's going on in Pelican. She's invited all the meetings and she's there.
Here's a picture I took at the golf course yesterday. This is on the seventeenth hole. Those littorals are totally choking off in violation of our pond standards, the alpha structure.
What?
Who's, the alpha structure, who's, who's reporting it? You can't see it because it's hidden.
Yeah, so the.
Our standards make it perfectly clear, ten feet upstream, downstream, it's perfectly clear, what? This has only been that away for about five years. Nobody's checking stuff around here. Don't, don't even begin to try to convince me otherwise. We don't have somebody checking our ponds. That's the problem. This should have never, ever happened if somebody was checking it. That would have been cleared out a long time ago. That is a clear violation of very standard that I think's questionable to begin with.
So what you're saying is that should.
So pissed off about that standard. You write something and then you turn your head and look the other way on the enforcement.
So to your point, it should have either been called out by the vendor or identified by staff. So we have two mechanisms for that.
I was hoping that what she was saying that.
That one is, I would just correct it, is three feet. So it's supposed to be free clear of littorals, three feet each side.
Ten feet.
I will look at it because I'm.
Any resident.
Anyways, that is included in the contract that we pay, so that should even, that didn't need to be reported. That needed to be, action should have been taken as soon as the vendor saw that. He could have reported, he could have reported as, hey, we went to this pond and this particular structure was blocked, we sprayed that. But if he finds something that is required for him to perform under the contract, it should be done.
Well, if he did it and he wrote the report and this is in the report, then we aren't doing the job of following up to the report.
Well, so in summary.
Which one's first?
So what Flavia is saying is, when the vendor comes out and they, they're doing inspection, they see something that that it falls within the contract, they should be fixing it, right? To that, to that point.
I'm guessing.
And then when L goes around or staff, when they identify items that are out of compliance or whatever, then they would document it in their report. So we have, if vendor doesn't fix it or if they don't identify it, or if they do identify, there should be an action to it.
Well, this type of stuff, if regardless of who identifies it, if it's not in the contract and that's somebody's job to determine whether or not it's in the contract, it's a changeover. I mean, it's that simple.
Right, but if it is, either they have, either identified and fixed it. If not, then that's where staff comes in and should be calling that stuff out. That's the order of process, right?
That's first I've heard.
And then in your world, in Pelican, you have a third entity that that does checks and balances and oversights, which is the ponds group, you know, because they're, they're still walking around and inspecting.
Absolutely. And we also have residents that understand what's supposed to be done and call when it's not.
Yeah.
Any resident can call and report an item. It hits the, once it hits the page, someone's gonna have to answer, just like.
Because I'm gonna tell you, like, for one person to monitor all of our lakes, I mean, on a monthly basis.
Unbelievable.
It's almost, you know, impossible to do, to do it thoroughly. And the faster, as fast as littorals grow during certain times of the year? I mean, by the time you get finished one, I mean, literally, you're doing a continuous cycle and that's, and there's other responsibilities. That's why I just say we spend too much money on ponds for us to not look at opportunities to enhance our oversight in those, in those areas.
So I I do know that the pond's contract says to abide by the pond's standards, which I just pulled it up. So it does talk about inspections. So it says, inspections and treatments of each flowway in or pond will occur at a minimum of one time per month. Treatments will concentrate on algae growth, exotic and nuisance vegetation, water clarity, elicited discharge, trash and point source solution. After each inspection and treatment, a written report and data with identified photographs will be submitted to G S T D staff by the contractor. Regardless of the duration, frequency, and type of maintenance, the stormwater system at a minimum must be maintained to all requirements set for by the regulatory agency. Contractors or any other persons authorized to perform inspections or treatment must use the easements by law. So that's.
Is that the contractor good policy?
That's the, that's our, that's, no, that's our policy, but our policy says that they must adhere to this.
Standard.
And then, and then it does talk about the littorals regarding the out, so control structure will be inspected at a minimal, at a minimum on a quarterly basis to ensure that no vegetation is speeding the flow of water. A three-foot, a, a, a three-foot minimum radius must be kept free of vegetation around any control structures to allow the proper water flow and operation. So I really am curious to see what the report from the vendor is stating.
I'll follow up.
Are we getting the report?
L may. I have not personally seen the report, and I believe it used to be included in Keith's monthly report, but I'll have to go back and look. I, we scrambled to put the monthly report together when I was at the conference last week. So it, it, it may have been provided. I may just have missed it, so.
We'll see. We need an updated copy by the next board meeting. That'd be nice.
Yes, and Ed, we will address that issue on hole seventeen.
Well, that, that and then the other one along the same line is this.
What, what, what pond is that? Because I know we've got.
Right by the gazebo in Gateway Greens.
Okay, I know we've got extreme divers out doing.
The guys going around, where do we have or what we have that shows the, the location of the places they're supposed to be working?
It has massive maps that we gave to Extreme and she's.
Because it could be they haven't got there yet.
Yeah, I know Flavia mentioned a location to me yesterday and I followed up with L and she said it was on the list. So if you can give me that location, I'll make sure we can see if it's on the map for this go around.
Yeah, if it's not on there, I mean, this is, this is pond one sixteen. It's right north of Gateway Greens Drive by the gazebo, golf course.
All right.
So, I mean, it's thirty feet off the.
Do we have signs identifying every pond over here? I don't have a chance.
No. So what, what I was gonna say.
Thought we were doing, I thought we had talked a while back about having a posted number sign or some type.
For the residents, they would saw.
It's so, they're so big, there would be so many signs the next thing you know.
We got.
They'd be tearing them down.
We got fifty, well, but they're very small signs. They're about this.
I've seen yours. I see, but you have them in spot points. Like our pond one sixteen, it's, it's a half mile long. You put a sign here, the people up the north end would even know.
Three on some of them, I don't know, but just the way people know what.
Okay, so I would, I would.
That would be helpful.
Okay, I would suggest this. We have Randy, right? So I have not seen the list of the point repairs, the one that I just asked about pond ninety yesterday. So it would be beneficial for us to update the actual map on the website and then.
With the point repair map?
Exactly.
Okay.
And then if Randy can send an email to the HOAs and with the map and say, those are the point repairs that we're doing. Forward this to the residents. If the residents notice, there's an additional area that needs it to contact us because then there's more eyes on the ground. They're already there. We'll go ahead and do it.
Done, have we done a, a blast that shows a map?
No.
But I missed it. We did.
We, we did not have a map because Tetra Tech does the majority of our maps for us. But I mean, we've got the rough one that we put together. We'll work on that. I believe the HOAs that where Extreme Divers was working was contacted prior to them going in. But picture's worth a thousand words.
Well, I know they're going around because you can see brand new white stone that stands out like a sore thumb in the areas where the stone or where the fabric was. in the areas where the stone or where the fabric was exposed. So you know, we know they're working. My only deal was is that the pond that they were working on this one, I thought they were done and I thought if you're done, you missed it.
Okay, all right. So we're done with, go ahead.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the president's council meeting on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
On favor?
And I'll move on consent agendas, A and B of agenda item nine. Um, I know we talked about inframark of the contract last time and we also talked about the metering pilot program. So.
No second.
So we have a motion and a second on favor. District engineer, so Tetra Tech task authorization update.
Stephen Agafi is here.
Good afternoon. Stephen Agafi, Tetra Tech district engineer. Um, I have a couple of things on the agenda today, one being this task authorization update. Um, I'm just gonna go through uh line by line if that's okay with everyone and then we can stop me at any time. Uh irrigation meter replacement, uh it's still on schedule to start construction in July. Uh, the irrigation pump station generator, uh staff is working with SRF to secure the loan. Uh, once we have that and the construction contract awarded, we'll issue an NTP and go from there. Uh, lower lower Hawthorne well, uh bids are due on Monday. So I believe be two meetings from then, uh you'll have a recommendation for reward, maybe the next meeting. Uh irrigation enforcement improvements, um Chelsea and Fred were reaching out to Lee County to see if they had any comments. Last I had heard, they didn't have any. Uh, they're working forward on nineties. Uh flowway rear adjustments, uh construction is ongoing in all four locations. Uh, this week, B and H Construction did receive the slide gates. Um, their plan is to install those uh starting at rear two and three next week and then rear one and then pond thirty-eight. Um, over the next two weeks, they'll be doing that work.
So are they on schedule?
Uh, they're ahead of schedule right now. Their original contract goes to August, so they're planning to be done much sooner than that.
Hopefully again in May. But the slide gates will go in next week, you say?
They're gonna start going in next week.
But you're, I mean, the anticipated completion date says five, one.
Yeah, that that was based on their, the schedule they had provided prior to this being published.
Update that for the next go around.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, so they provided an updated schedule on uh Tuesday. We went, we met with them.
Cause all the concrete piping work done on rear three, as you know.
There's a little bit of piping left, I believe, on two and maybe three, but most of it's. Most of it's gone.
These all buttoned up and finished, as I can tell.
Right.
But three.
I know one of those location has a little bit of pipe that's left.
Yeah, okay, that's gotta be three. Last time I was out there, but there wasn't any issues. It's just they are done.
Right, yeah.
And and this is a very big project. So once it's complete, is it possible that we could get a tour of it? So we know, so we know what happened and what it's looking like now.
One at a time.
Yeah, one at a time. I can go last.
I was gonna volunteer to take you through it. That's illegal.
I'm glad you guys are learning.
Rear one may be tricky because it's in the middle of nowhere and that road is really hard to get down um when it's wet. Pictures are fine for that one.
Which one?
Rear one west of seventy-five.
Oh, that's fun to go over there. Go over there, go over there in wet season.
Yeah.
Ed likes to go there because I think he's got balls over there.
I might have.
Wear your mouth boots.
Yes.
Uh, Griffin, you told your relocation, you saw them working the past few days um to remove the oak trees. So they're technically started. Uh, utility work will start in early May. Um, aerator FPL assistance, uh we got some information from staff and we're we're working this week and we'll be wrapping that up next week. Uh, phase two, year two, they are substantially bleed on lake sixty-two. Lake fifty-eight, um they have all of the fabric down and they're about fifty percent done with stone and twenty-five percent done with sod. Um, a villa circle resurfacing is.
Done.
It's essentially done. The last thing they have to do is put thermoplastic striping down for the stop bars. Um, they were just waiting for the asphalt to cure a little longer. Um, but the app project's wrapped up. You won't see that on this list again. Pelican Preserve Road inspections, we submitted a draft report to Gateway staff last week. Chelsea and staff reviewed it and provided comments for us. We're going to incorporate those comments um just to improve the report and uh once that's done, Chelsea will or Laura will have it taken to P pack for their review.
Yeah, P pack's the one that asked for this, right?
Yeah.
It'll be at their next meeting, their May meeting.
Yeah.
I've I've seen it. I've, I don't know what the other comments are, but they did a good job on it. I like the way it's phased in years to.
Thank you. Uh, Gateway Storage Building, the building that'll go out here. Um, we've got comments back from South Florida. They're minor comments. Lee County permit went out this week. Um, so we're just waiting for comments from that, wrapping up hundred percents and um, it's a an aggressive schedule, but I think we can can make what I have uh written down here. Gateway Admin Building, Eric Phi and Steve Weiss are on the call to talk about that. I think that's coming up. And a few agenda items down from here. Um, phase three, so the FY twenty-four lake bank restoration, we submitted sixty percent plans. I'm sorry, they're so large. There's a lot of sheets to look through. Um, we'll talk about that right after this. Um, Timber Creek sheet flow analysis. Trying to get the stormwater model from the EOR for Timber Creek to incorporate into Gateway's model.
Questions?
Yes, Ed.
Did somebody go out there and shoot that?
Um, yes, I ran from.
The uh uh FPL easement.
They they have a contract to.
Get the elevations of that. Reader that goes across the flowway.
It's actually for um corrugated metal pipes that go across these.
I know that, but I'm more worried about what the elevation of the ground is there to prevent. This whole thing was predicated on sheet flow.
Yeah.
How does it sheet flow if you have a device that sends the sheet a different direction?
Yeah.
And do, have we got the contours to know that?
We have contours. We're getting shots on the metal pipe to.
Yeah, I'm worried about shots going northwest up toward us here, extending that water this way.
Right.
That's why I want to make sure we've got it because if that point up here is lower than that point down there or the point at which it would try to sheet flow over into Worthington, uh we're gonna get the wrong end of the stick.
Right. Yep.
I want to make sure that we don't do anything with Worthington until we make sure how this is handled. I I'm just really betting my bottom dollar, they're worried about this.
They are.
They aren't even looking. They they could care less.
They they the same, we had a a different um pre-op meeting yesterday, but with the same EOR and they're interested to know of our findings as well.
Well, if the water goes northwest and doesn't go onto them, they're gonna be happy as can be because they don't have to take care of it. That's that's what I'm worried about. I I'm, their heart's not in finding a contrary solution to the problem because if it goes northwest, it's just less water they have to mess with on their property.
Yeah, they want to make sure they're not flooding anyone though, so they they do have that in their interest. So they're aware of it. We've been working with them. They've been great to work with.
As long as we've got those elevation shot.
Yeah.
Of that that FPL.
Um, hydraulic model, this is for the potable water system in Gateway. There hasn't been one made and we're creating one now. Um, we've wrapped up uh the GIS and we're in the modeling phase right now. We've been working with Lee County to get data off of their meters um that go into Gateway.
Does this associate with the uh?
FGUA interconnect.
I'm sorry.
FGUA interconnect. Yeah, that was the driving factor to get this model done, so.
Good, good, good.
Um, yep. Development updates, Arborwood Phase Three, they're working on punch list items still for their turnover. Uh, Gateway Charter High School, um, there's some easement issues that need to get sorted out from the original development. That's in the works. Daniel Daniel's apartments, uh which is one of the projects we were discussing. Um, they're kind of waiting on us for the stormwater model and they also have to design how they're gonna get reused to their site. Uh, Santa Lou's construction's ongoing. They still have some reoccurring issues with uh their sediment control. Um, we had a pre-op meeting yesterday for Centos Apartments. That's gonna be at the existing Alta Resources site at Commerce, uh Lakes Drive and Gateway Boulevard.
The old Alta or the?
The old Alta Resources. Yeah, they're not there right now. So it's a the southwest corner of Commerce Lakes Bowl Drive and Gateway Boulevard.
Southwest corner.
Yeah. This one right, right here.
Centosa apartment.
So.
Go go back.
So how they're gonna do that? Repurposing that build?
They're gonna demolish everything, the entire site and build five apartment buildings for two hundred and fifty-six units.
Tony, I I would.
That's good for our, that's allowed use in our deal.
I don't have the zoning in front of me, but I can.
That that's.
I can check. It's strange. I've never heard of going from a commerce to uh multi-family.
The uh the legislature in their, uh, what's it called? The Live Local Act has allowed tremendous flexibility to developers to convert commercial industrial properties to multifamily housing projects.
And so do they have to go through some?
They may not have to go through a zoning process. I I can double check the statute. That's part of the.
Yeah, I know. I would tell you and I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything about this, but I was actually thinking about it the last couple of months. With, you know, we might have to, you know, pay, keep close uh attention on this because I I don't know. Like the Gartner Building is another prime example of where I could see. You know, if they can't get that thing rented out, being able to convert. And again, I don't know any, have no insight on that whatsoever.
How many units, you say?
Two hundred and fifty-six apartment.
But it's something to keep an eye on.
That hasn't hit the street yet, I guarantee you.
Well, we just found out essentially yesterday.
Yeah, no, it hasn't.
Until that's hits the street.
Yeah, the uh. It's the Florida Live Local Act provides incentives to build affordable and workforce housing. Takes effect July first, twenty twenty-three. And 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 again, it allows a allows a county to circumvent its comprehensive plan and zoning regulations when approving the development of affordable housing, any parcel zone, residential, commercial, industrial, subject to certain conditions.
They did have their pre-op meeting with Lee County and South Florida.
Yeah, and here's another part. Current law provides, this is a blurb, so subject to the author of the blurb. Uh, specifically, current law provides that a county may approve a residential project on any parcel zoned as residential, commercial or industrial without the need to follow local rules and regulations for, without the need to rezone as long as at least ten percent of the units included in the project were used for affordable housing and it did not apply for received sale funding. Uh, so anyways, I think it actually makes it more flexible to convert.
You're saying that ten percent of it has to be for affordable housing?
That's current law. Now. They amended it. They actually made it. It says a county must administratively authorize a proposed residential or mixed-use project in any parcel zoned as commercial, industrial or mixed-use without any cop plan amendments, rezoning, provided that well, the project contains at least forty percent affordable units. And it does say it does not exceed the highest density and it goes on to a number of other regulations.
So.
I don't know with this exactly.
The point, the lake she going up. We had a pre-application meeting with a developer. They have a long lengthy process that they have to follow. But the biggest takeaway from that is this, to my knowledge, is one of the first redevelopments in Gateway and Gateway is very young. So that that is just something to keep in mind. We.
It was someone from the on the east coast, West Palm.
West, yeah.
Banks Engineering is the engineer of record for the site development. Banks. Banks Engineering.
Banks is the one doing.
Banks that did Timber Creek?
Uh, yeah, they, no, no, that was Morris.
Was that Morris?
Yeah, that was Morris to put.
Dan- Daniel's Parkway Apartments.
Okay, uh, go back to Santa Lou's. What's the status over there? They came in, put some dirt down. I didn't see any stakes, anything showing dimensions. And then all of a sudden they brought in the worst looking sod and then I finally figured it out, Bahia. And they put it along the bank and there's no water, no water, no irrigation.
Yeah.
And the first rain we get of any substantial deal, we're gonna have all that sod right down in the lake.
Right.
What's the status behind those uh units twelve oh one and twelve oh one oh? What have have we accepted that new uh slope in there? Cause I sure.
Not yet. Um, I haven't put my uh boots on the ground out there, but I I know they did stake it out. Wyatt was out there when they had it staked, but Wyatt, our inspector. Um, so he was out there while they were filling it and grading it. Um, I'll go take a look at it myself uh tomorrow and.
What was our requirement to them for the uh the top? I would have thought that they would have done something uh fabric wise to protect that because you know that there there's no laterals. They would live there for nothing.
Yeah, so what, it was originally.
This thing is going to be eroding. We're lucky that inch and a half of rain we got the other day didn't tear it all up.
Yeah.
But somebody needs to look at it, but what what did we tell them we wanted them to do?
So there were previously permitted plans for that lake bank. Uh, so I essentially took those permitted plans or approved plans and told them they had to match that slope and the uh the distance from the homes to the control elevation. And so essentially built it the way it was originally permitted to be built.
So from the from the slab of the building out.
They had to be like twenty-two feet away from control elevation from the building.
Okay, twenty-two feet.
I'm I'm pretty sure it was twenty-two feet.
Okay. And the surface?
Um, what do you mean?
What 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 did they put on the ground to keep it from eroding?
Oh, I presume sod is all they put down, yeah. We don't have anything in a permit criteria manual to to armor the lake banks.
Well, my concern is that I I just can't picture that sod taking hold. It's been down there for a month.
Are they gonna stay in or just put it down?
Uh, they just put it down.
Yeah.
That's pretty standard.
That's what I'm afraid of. Okay.
Okay.
I just don't want, because that's in our backyard. I don't want us writing off and accepting that thing.
Right.
And then coming back and I have fifteen homeowners raising Cain as to why did you allow that to happen?
Yeah, we'll watch it.
We'll be back in is putting the stone all the way around that lake, which is what people wanted in the first place.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, um, Chelsea, when the Pelican Preserve Road inspections get presented to P pack at their next meeting, can they also have all of the costs for a villa circle um with those documents also? So they can get a rough idea as, you know, half a mile of road is gonna cost you this amount of money.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we costed out the uh well, you'll see it in the report, but essentially like, um, I think it was the thirteen, twenty-three or thirteen percent of the roads were in poor to fair condition and we we have a schedule to repair those over the next four years and we provide a cost estimate to do those.
Okay.
And they're street specific prices.
You'll be happy when you see it.
And we're adding some more information to improve it, so it'll be even better.
Thank you.
Um, if that's the last of that, I'd like to go on to uh FY twenty-four lake bank restoration of the sixty percent. Need some direction on a couple of items. Um, these are the six lakes that we're going to be restoring and FY twenty-four, we have a tight schedule. We've got to get this to SRF in June. Uh, June tenth, so um, we're bringing sixty percents today. They're not complete plans. We still have work to do on our end. We need some feedback. We plan to bring ninety percents, ninety percent back on May eleventh. And then a hundred percents on June first. Um, one of the things we talked about at the last meeting were trees. Need some guidance on that. It was kind of seemed like there was kind of like a directive that any tree except like a lateral planted tree, like a cypress tree or a cabbage bomb maybe should stay, but someone has a citrus tree in the LME or some type of, you know, decorative tree to, it should be removed. I want to get some direction on that.
Or a tree that would be hindering the contractor to efficiently perform.
What about an oak tree?
Yeah, there's a lot of those on seventy-eight.
Lot of them. On some of the ones in our ponds, my issue is is that if it's back fifteen to twenty feet, that's one thing. But when it's setting on the edge of the control elevation.
Yeah, it's too close.
In fact, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think any tree should be setting from, let's say, a foot above control elevation down. That's just in the way to do a good job. And if it's a.
What about a cypress tree?
Cypress tree, that's a lake tree, that little bit different.
So I I I can agree with Ed, but I think top of mind, I think there's five trees. So there are the two types of maples, the cypress, uh, the Florida holly.
It's like elm trees.
Yeah, so there's there's more than ju- it's quite a field. There are, you know, lake, lake, lake trees, what I'll call. So those would stay.
Right.
Regarding the oak, it's.
Would or would not stay?
Would stay because they're required. The oak, it's tricky because depending on the development order, they would be required to be there, right? So.
But they shouldn't be in the easement.
Well, that's the issue. They should not be.
I mean, and that's, I mean, they should not, I mean, the developers should not have put an oak tree in the east or any period.
All of the all the planes in our community that come in, and we've had several different developers, every one of them shows on there the LME. And every once in a while, we'll have to tell them, hey, get that stuff out of the LME. But they have been very good in keeping any vegetation out of the LME.
Yeah. Is it a lot? Is it a lot of oak trees in the LME?
It it varies. Um, like on seventy-eight and Daniel's Preserve, there's a lot of oak. It, it varies. Um, like on seventy-eight and Daniel's Preserve, there's a lot of oak trees. Um, there's a lot of also like non, you know, non-natives or decorative trees.
But I think the approach, I would go with Ed, like for those, we keep it if the oak tree is not.
They can work around.
Way far out, then keep it. But if anything that's on LME, fruit trees or any other tree, any items, playgrounds, everything, fences. Cause I know you're encountering that.
Yeah, yeah.
Fire pits, name it. All of that has to be clear. And that, I think it was a mess. I think that's uh, something for staff as soon as we identify, put the stakes out there for survey. Here's what the survey, I think an email goes out to the HOA and saying, hey, what do you see there are the stakes and? And that's what the property ends. The next will be the fence. What do you see? The orange fence, that's LME. Anything from, that is inside of that fence, the LME needs to be removed by you and give them the time. Um, that is what I would go, so.
So if it's like it, for instance, it's, it's an orange tree and it's ten, it's in the LME, but it's eight to ten feet away from our trench line. Keep or remove?
Is it above the upper trench line?
Yes, but it's in the LME.
Well, well, so let's make it easy. Let's, so guys, we know what the LME is. If we're gonna take, there's two stances we could take. No plantings inside the LME, or we're gonna set a threshold of what's acceptable inside the LME, and that's whatever the.
See, the trench line would be a, to me, the trench line would be.
Plus like three feet so they can work it.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think we set that, and then whatever, whether it's an oak, whether it's something else.
I'll tell you now for this reason, maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay, because that happened on eighty-three and that's going to happen on sixty-two.
What's, what's the issue?
Maintenance. When Cross Creek is over there spraying the latorals, that little buggy, what is he gonna go on people's property now? Because now there's a tree and.
So what's acceptable? Five feet from the?
Well, I see.
Either, either.
Well, you're saying that if you, let's say, allowed trees in the fifteen to twenty-foot upper limit. While it's not a issue of the construction, it's an issue of the maintenance.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Who's the hell on me? And then we, we say, uh, um. Control elevate.
They'll go out on the stone.
And then what is the, and then what's the acceptable feet from?
That's what they're doing now.
Well, but yeah.
Now the chance to fix it.
And I'll tell you, that also happens on Stony Brook, going out on the stones, and you can see how all the stones slide it down.
Yeah.
So we don't wanna do that. So I guess unfortunately, I would say, if it's on the LME, it will be removed because while it may not affect the construction at this point in time. It will affect maintenance issue.
Uh, typically, what, how far from um, control elevation or high, what would you, would you use control elevation?
For maintenance?
No, 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 control, yeah, well. Control elevation and then how far, how many feet is it from to the, to the LME?
It depends.
It's twenty foot for control.
Or four to five.
Typically, it's to the bridge.
To the trench.
Four to five feet.
Twenty feet.
But it varies. Stony Brook is five.
So can I chime in?
Yeah, it does.
It's, so Stony Brook is five feet. So right there, if you have a. If Cross Creek is using a little buggy that's a little bit out there, and there is nothing, they'll be barely make it.
So I, if I can just provide two cents for what it's worth. I want you guys to think back to the oak trees on Gateway Boulevard. And those trees at the time when they were installed, nobody thought they would become this big. The same thing can be applied to your LME. Somebody may have put in a tree. Ten feet back. And when they put it in, it was this, and, and over time, we're, we're experiencing this everywhere. So.
But there's a big difference. One had a prohibition and the other one didn't. One was elected along the Gateway Boulevard. The one in the LME is a prohibition. They knew they weren't put it in there at first. But they did.
And so I guess, what do we give direction? That anything in the LME. As long as it's not, you know, the, the old, you know, the requirement.
Right.
Needs to be removed and will notify the resident. Because it may not, it may not impede construction or the plans at that time, but it will at one point impede maintenance because depending on the water level. They may be able to go a- areas that they don't put rock down, but if the water level is too high, they cannot.
Yeah.
When they spray that, they do not spray it walking, they spray it on the, from the car. So if it's windy, i- it is really tricky, so um.
I think, well, I think we go back to Doug's point is, we're spending a lot of money, we wanna maintain these, and we wanna, and we don't wanna go on private property. Uh, so if, if that's the direction from the board, then that's how.
Start making exceptions.
That's your problem.
And, and if it's not consistent, we're gonna say, oh, well, this one was ten feet. Well, we only have five feet.
We're just gonna tell them we got smart.
Yeah. I think we. This is what we've been saying for years. If there's something.
I think so. But it's on the LME.
If it's on LME, if it's not.
Yeah. It's not one of the required.
But what I would do is, I would give them the opportunity to relocate it.
Yes.
Yeah.
So hey.
Yeah, don't whack them without knowledge.
Yeah, yeah. Give them the opportunity to relocate it at their own expense, or we're going to take it out as part of construction, right?
I think that's a good idea.
So um.
So if it's a big oak, we're absorbing the cost of that.
You want a motion? Okay, so I'll make a motion then for all. All the trees that are on LME with the exceptions of the required ones that we talked about, to be removed. And notify the resident prior to um, removing them, giving them a time, I don't know, soon as.
Trees are just gonna be yours or we're gonna be moving.
They wanna relocate, give them the opportunity to relocate at their expense.
Otherwise.
Otherwise, we're gonna take it out.
And we'll include it in the cost of the project.
Yeah, yeah. And just make sure we call out within the element.
On the plants.
Trees, fences, fire pits, everything, right?
Everything.
Anything that falls within the LME that's not acceptable will be removed.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna limit it to trees. I like the motion.
So it was a motion? That was a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Stephen, is that clear for you?
It is, and I've got the recording, so we can go back.
Very, very old graves.
It should have been in the first block.
Yes.
Okay, so I should have brought this up, but drainage easements from the road to the LME, same thing.
Wait a minute, from where?
From the street to the LME.
Fifteen foot typically, seven and a half feet on both sides.
Yep.
Uh.
I mean, on like, on Daniel Preserve, we're not gonna be able to get around removing trees.
I mean, again, same theory. They're not meant, nothing is to be there, no fences, no nothing.
Yeah, but it's a little different because you're not gonna go on personal property there.
You will. They have to bring the machines.
Between the street.
This is in between homes.
Sorry, between homes. I thought you were about.
We're talking about in between homes, from the street to the lake.
Same thing, they have to bring.
That would have been an oblosh. You're talking between homes.
You drive on the street, you need to get to the lake. You go in between the homes and, and Gateway's drainage easement.
So any place a drainage structure is out in the street, seven and a half feet back.
Yeah.
Problem we got now, we gotta think about, is Gateway Greens, Comcast just.
One nineteen, I see.
Comcast just came in and put in all of their, what they call the nap vaults, to provide the service for the fiber. Right on that easement line.
Goodie.
And our own water and sewer lines are right on, and our boxes are right in that same uh, easement.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do?
I mean, on those cases, we'll either have to find another easement we can use, or try to get a TCE from the owner, or work with the utility for.
What?
Temporary construction easement. Um. Yeah, those are your options.
Okay.
I just hate telling people to take out because when.
Well, do you want the contractor to replace it with anything?
Well, the, the problem we got is we're going back and we're fighting history of WCI, Westinghouse. They mandated, mandated uh, landscape plans to be inclusive of that area.
Sometimes they would put streetlights there.
It's a nightmare. Oh, there's streetlights there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and my deal is going out and telling owners to remove stuff when the other people that have stuff there were allowing them to get it. That just doesn't seem very kosher to me. Don't do as I do, do as I say.
I mean, we can remove trees and replace shrubs. They're not super expensive.
What they, that, that fifteen foot is, in most of these are a DNE, DNUE, Drainage and Utilities. So it's, it's kind of open as to who is to use.
No, there's the, the ones.
Utility parallel to the road, the D is perpendicular.
Well, my point is, is that a lot of those in Gateway Greens, where you see the inlet at the street, you know, there's a head wall at the back. They're cluttered with combination of uh, utilities and landscaping.
Yeah.
And well, I don't know a lot in any of Gateway that is not because the landscaping requirements of the original developer and the covenants mandated you do it.
Yeah.
We don't know that.
But we don't abide by those. Ga- Gateway, we as Gateway Thursday, we did not abide by those.
So there are some drainage easements that were fine. We don't have to mess with anyone's landscaping.
We don't know, we don't know where we might have issues at this point.
We're gonna have to have some landscaping removed on drainage easements in Daniel's Preserve.
Well.
Well, my question is.
Well, we're, I've been working with Chris Schumming for about the last two weeks, cause they're moving into our community, and we got three ponds that have this issue. And it has been next to impossible to try to figure out how we're gonna get that contractor from out the street. Where we're now going to be dumping stone to be able to haul it back there and get it back to the lake.
Is this any different than what FBNL would do? When they have a box and people put shrubbery around it?
Exactly.
They would tear down.
They would take it out.
They would even talk about it.
They just chop it. I mean, whatever, it's no different.
Yeah.
Well, when they put the plantings there, they're taking that risk.
Well, but the issue is, is that, one, you're chopping, limited chop. We're talking about a complete removal.
Yeah, and do you, and do you replace it with anything, or do you leave it open?
Well, it shouldn't have been there to begin with, so we shouldn't have replaced.
What'd you say?
Shouldn't have been there to begin with, so we're not gonna replace.
I agree with that. I'm just asking.
No requirement that it wasn't, wasn't a prohibition to be there. It was, it was mandated by the covenants.
But, but we don't.
Manded by the covenants. That's the problem we got.
Tony, if something is mandated by the covenants or the particular private HOA. And what our requirements are to keep the, the lake, the, the easements free and clear so we can do the job. We go by what we are required, right?
What's dominant?
Our easement. Our, our easement's a dominant estate. If you have a fee simple owner and you have an easement.
But, but the issue, that's such a question, Tony. Question is, who's responsible for the landscaping that was on there? To do it. Up north, where we worked it, is that if we took out the material we included in the bid of the project, we would replace the material.
That's not required, but a lot of organizations or entities do that, but it's not required.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's, a lot of communities, governments do that, but not every project, and it's not required.
So the issue, we're gonna tell the people, if they're going to go in and they've got uh, a thousand dollars' worth of landscaping that we're going to tear out. What is our story? We're gonna tell them.
And we're saying that's by the HOA or by the homeowner?
It's your easement, you need it.
HOA, they do with it.
If it's interfering with the use of the district's easement, that's the, it's the argument.
Yeah, but the question is, they're going to ask is, who's gonna replace this?
No one.
And our answer is right now that I'm hearing is.
Nobody.
Nobody.
Not the district. It ain't us.
Well, not only are we not gonna replace it, but they, they should replace.
Correct.
Now you're going back, now listening. The covenants say they have to do it. That's the requirement of the covenants and the plans.
We have conflict.
I know it.
Which, which then Tony just clarified that we supersede.
Now, that's.
Well, it becomes Tony's problem.
Well, I think Tony just answered the question. I'm trying to get away, get an answer that is a definitive answer from the owners. Is, is that we're, we, the CDD, are not paying for it. Is that simple?
Correct.
Yes.
Do we know where there's covenants?
I'm sorry.
Do we know? Which areas?
All the Gateway Greens is that way.
Uh, what I can do is, I think I have from the prior conveyance, I think I have uh, the Gateway Greens Covenant. I could look at those real quickly before the next board meeting. But to see what it says about easements, cause a lot of times even the covenants will say, governments will have easements over a lot of other areas for their necessary utilities and facilities. I mean, that is separate and apart of them.
Tony, ours is even worse. Ours is even worse. The guy that authored this stuff is living in the community, the attorney. I think you all know who I'm talking about.
Okay, so.
Is that they put sketches of the communities you're in. You might be in Mahogany Run, you might be in Hampton uh, Greens, you might be in Mahogany Isles North. Each one of them's got a little sketch that is a part of the covenant that tells you how you will landscape your lot.
Okay, Ed, is it a part of the covenant or?
But it's the issue.
You look into.
We'll just say no.
But, but I was.
And soon we get.
So can I turn on?
We'll say irrigation, sod. Make the elevation, you know, okay, cause I know we had some complaints at Stony Brook. Make sure it's back to what is required between the homes, and that's it.
Well, now that's another issue. Irrigation lines, now how are we handling that? Irrigation lines, I have.
They need to repair them. Is that irrigation there? They repair them.
We'll repair those.
Yeah, yeah. That and sod, absolutely, yeah.
We want this object. I don't mean to.
That might appease them.
We got some other items I gotta talk about, so.
Okay.
All right, so you want a motion on that too, or?
I think I got it.
Let's just keep going.
Okay, drain boxes. I know another, this will be a short conversation.
This is the bubblers in between?
So at the last meeting, we talked about, do we want them at every lot line? Do we want them just where the drains exist? There was pretty board motion to just install the bubble up boxes where the drains exist.
To me, if there is a swale or the imperence of a flow of water at that location. And to be able to prepare ourselves if we ever get so brave to do what you guys did over there. Of requiring uh, leaders to the pipes.
Yeah.
I'd say put boxes there. So show them on the plans.
For each, look, each, in between each home.
Not everyone. Where you have the issue of a swale and or a, a, a area that would create an erosion problem.
Okay.
So that we have to come back, we can tell them, you put in a leader, you put in a leader.
It'd be rare that you don't have that swale.
That's what I'm saying, it's almost, it's all.
That's gonna be almost.
Gateway Greens is not, it was done so long ago that they, the appearance of swales is not, not that big.
Yeah.
Now, some of the other communities that are newer, you might see that swale between them, in which case you might have them every lot. But I'd hate to just arbitrarily.
Owners aren't gonna feel cheated that they didn't get these boxes.
What was the cost? I think, I know eighty-three was forty-five hundred dollars for the whole thing, and I think it was sixty boxes.
Um. Met Towers, average price for the lakes they're doing now is like six something, but. With, that was old prices, so I'm using seven twenty-five a box right now. If we do just the boxes where there's existing drains, it would be about twenty-three thousand dollars for these six lakes. If we do it every lot line, it's about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So it's an extra eighty grand to do every, every lot line with one box in between each home.
How much are you paying for?
We're not paying anywhere near that much with Copeland.
Yeah, wait a minute. He's, he's giving you the total. How many make, what's your, what's your unit price per box installed?
He said about seven hundred?
Yeah, it was about seven hundred dollars. That was the, the competitive low bid average price.
That's just.
We're not paying anywhere.
That's, that's, yeah.
Drainage for that much money.
That's just to put the box in?
That's just the box, yeah.
Just the, the forty-five dollar box that you, the forty-five dollar box that the hole is already.
Did you dig a hole and then put the box?
No, the hole has to be dug already for the trench, so the hole is already there. We already paid for it. All, all the seven hundred dollars is literally to take the box.
Different construction company will go into business.
Hey, I'm good with that too.
Yeah, and the banks, well, in association.
Seven hundred dollars.
Yes.
So we can continue status quo like we're doing now where there's, there's drain pipes or existing um.
Yeah.
Gutters coming down.
Right.
And or us, an existing swale, and just continue status quo.
We could all sub it out ourselves to somebody else.
They can do that, too.
We do a third party just coming.
I think I changed my mind after that.
That would not occur.
Price is ridiculous.
I agree with that.
That would not occur at the same time as the contractor, so, so we're clear.
And it doesn't result in any damage because it's at the top of the LME.
Correct.
So, I, I changed my mind that I would do it. We could always get somebody else to come back, you know, on a case-by-case contract, do that.
Well, we need to at least tie into the existing drains.
I'm sorry.
We need to at least tie, if something.
Existing.
Absolutely.
So, continue with the status quo as we've been operating with this year's ponds.
Yeah, and then, and then, right now, I would, I would start getting estimates for the six, you know, for another vendor to do it.
That sounds like you have one already thinking about it, yeah.
Let me just open it with this caveat. We use Copeland when he's not busy other places, and for that consideration, our projects may take a lot longer, but they're done a hell of a lot cheaper.
Well, you can get somebody like, oh, what's his name that was doing the sidewalks?
Atlantic Southern, Atlantic Southern, or?
Yeah, what's his name?
It's, it's very expensive because of the soil. Most people do not want to afford it. These good old boys don't care, they're.
Well, this guy does a lot of that kind of work, and he, he would love to have a contract like that.
So, I don't know how that would play out with the SRF funding, uh, but that's something we could consider as part of the bonds.
It's much smaller money, yeah.
Or, or funding it as we could put, come up with a, a long-term plan and just go pond by pond.
So, if it has piping and it is going to the lake, we put it in, otherwise.
We don't.
Yes.
Okay. And one more question, this, that is six ponds, when are we starting construction?
I'm, when do we start construction? Um, so, SRF, it'll go to June, SRF, they'll have the hearing in August to put it on the fundable list. And then we'll be able to bid it out after that.
Okay.
Anytime after that hearing.
So, what we could do is what Pelican did, so let, let's do a hybrid. Let's have Randy send out a letter saying, this is what we're gonna do. If you don't have the, the, the bubble box, we're not doing anything. However, if you're planning in the near future, like send this now, within the next year to do it, then it'll be included, because then it gives. So they'll go ahead and start, they have one whole year to install it, so then by the time you get to it, okay, I, I, when I look at this in twenty twenty-three, there were three boxes, but now they're twenty, because people took advantage of a whole year notice to go ahead and do that.
Right.
So, here.
Yeah, that's great.
Here's the caveat with that, is this design has to be approved by SRF, so we will have to, if, if, if we move forward and do that.
We're in there now.
We have to set in a deadline that we need to know by a time and date certain, because these guys are moving sixty to ninety to a hundred real quick.
That's if you want it funded by SRF.
I think at this point in time, you're, you're, you're trying to be impossible to have it funded by SRF.
I think it's too late.
You can't give the owners enough time to make.
I mean, you could go to the November hearing with that separate project.
Do what?
You could go to the, the next hearing for that separate project.
It's not part of this facility.
It's in the facilities plan to have drain boxes. I mean, that's part of the project.
So, I think there's some homework.
An alternative.
Yeah, I think there's some homework that we can do on our side.
Okay.
So, did you get clear?
I have clear direction on that. I'm, real quick, guys, I know there's a lot left on the agenda, promises, last thing, litorals.
No.
Okay.
We got that.
That is very easy.
Right, but we're not done.
Wait, we're not done, that's it.
Okay.
I thought you were asleep.
Five of the six lakes do have DO requirements for litorals. They're the code minimum litorals, we have to have that on there.
We're following that.
We're going to be, that's the plan. Our, in our scope, we said we were not gonna produce litoral plans. We were gonna use the DO-approved plans that have litorals on that, and say, hey, county, this is what we're gonna do. But the problem is, when, once we started looking at them, they're not clear enough for a contractor to, like, we can't have them on our plans and then a contractor go install them. Like, they're not gonna know where, how many and where you want them, so.
Where are they at relative to the Armamax? The last thing I want is punching holes in the Armamax.
Let him finish.
Okay, so, what I'm proposing, there's two ways we can do it. What I'm proposing to do is to have a change order for eighty-seven hundred dollars to have a landscape architect come on, so they can sign and seal landscaping plans to incorporate litorals into our design. So, when we hit the street, we have a full set.
How are you physically going to install them?
I'll get there, yeah, so.
Does this architect, he ain't gonna care about that Armamax, uh, warranty? He don't care.
So, we'll have a full set of plans that has litoral locations and the type of plants and where they'll survive best. And he can work with Ponds Committee, L, whoever you guys want to. It's eighty-seven hundred dollars. Uh, what we'll do is work with him, my plan is still to do Armor Max and Stone around the entire lake. What I've talked to him about is to, to pierce the Armor Max and the non-woven and plant a bare root litoral in the soil. Because he put it on the rock, it's not gonna survive, it needs to be in the soil. I've talked, he, he thinks it'll work. Um, he, he does with, deals with litorals. Um, we have seen some lakes that have litorals on them that have gone back up into the rocks, so.
How many, how many per square foot? One per square foot?
Start, I mean, God, they're gonna grow.
Yeah.
That's not my problem.
The thing is, we have to have litorals on these lakes, and a lot of these lakes are a hundred percent.
Nine holes in it. Will you warrant the, warrant the product?
Okay, so, we did that on eighty-three. We added.
Installed litorals.
We went out and we perforated the fabric, we installed them in the fabric.
Okay.
A hundred percent die out. None of them survived, because to make a hole like this, they are not able to propagate. And, and if they would, they would have ripped the fabric, and that was, we only did the black fabric, we didn't do the green, so you couldn't do that. So, we, so then the vendor went back and we installed litorals below the toe, below the eight to twelve.
Okay.
And, and then it was fine, and, but nothing on the fabric, because one, we had the issue with Metro, because of about the warranty, because like, if we put a hole in there, it's.
Well, you're.
And it just, it just did not work.
Yeah. What could do maybe is pull the toe up where we want litorals. So, it's not so low, and then plant litorals and then kind of like a little bay area.
Because we put litorals in, and did perforate the Armamax, but we haven't had a problem. History, it's from then till now, they're looking great. They have spread out, and it didn't degrade any. We didn't get into the issue of what somebody warranty.
Well, the area that you want to control erosion, I'm not talking about water quality issue, I'm talking about pure erosion control.
Right.
Is a foot above the control to two feet below. That's what every design manual shows. Foot above, two feet below. Do what?
The two feet below is really hard to find out there, because we have some rather significant drop-offs. That's why we have the.
I don't wanna rely on the litoral farmer, though. I wanna have.
Where you drop off the two-one slope, so it's, there's no need for a litoral there. So, the, the zone is that area that's a foot to two, and if you take that, that's three, three times four, is a twelve-foot area. You know, I think we rounded it off to ten. That's where you want, that's where you want to know. From a foot above the control.
Okay.
And if it's a foot above, and it's a four-to-one, that's four feet. Same thing going down below is eight feet. That's where you really want litorals for erosion.
Yeah.
That's where the erosion occurs. Who cares if it's eroding twenty feet down the lake? It's designed to. Do what now?
What, once the stone's in place.
Right.
You don't get them.
So, regardless, we have to have litorals, we have to incorporate them somehow.
If, if it's not on an erosion issue, because you've accomplished the erosion solved by with the, the Armamax, put the litorals in an area where you achieve the water quality that doesn't have the product. Over along the golf course, over along.
So, these lakes are like a hundred percent homes that don't have.
Hundred percent homes?
Exactly.
I'm okay with that, because our experience is.
Yeah.
Alls I can say is, don't, alls I can say is, we will look like the biggest fools. We go in and take a perfectly good piece of Armamax with a twenty-year warranty on it, and we lose the warranty because we stick in bushes that won't grow. That, somebody's gonna ask him if we got, you know what, for brains.
So, the, does that?
It hasn't worked yet in Gateway.
Does that?
Why we're doing it?
Does that requirements, the ones that you've seen, are, do they have specific locations for, for the litorals or not? Because I know some do, some are very specific, like he has to go behind. No, they don't, the actual location.
Yeah, it'll show like.
So, it's both.
Here and here and here. No, they, they're, they're not specific locations.
They're not.
So, we can choose.
So, that's better. Gives us flexibility.
Right.
But not if, not if there's.
It's a hundred percent.
It's a hundred percent home.
Right, we still have to choose if it's behind a home.
Here's the question, so, were those litoral requirements, I guess it was multipurpose, it's for water quality and for erosion? Consideration, correct? So, if we're solving the erosion problem by the solution, then what is the, and the, and we don't have any historical issues of water quality?
Right.
Why would we?
Quality, it's, you know, a place for the fish to propagate.
The reason why you're not having water quality and some of the issues is probably because you have litorals.
Like, the most preserve has, it has requirement for like over forty-three hundred litorals, and there's like hardly any out there at all. And because of the erosion, it's probably sloughed off and litorals are gone with it.
I think our position is, I have a hard time poking a hole in something that's gonna void warranty. Um, so what's, what's the alternative to that?
I got an idea. Is there a alter, or an opportunity at Use Daniels? I don't think it's really that serious on the escarpment, is it?
Yeah, there's some pretty bad areas.
But are there areas where we could take and convert and go to the filter fabric, and then put the litorals in the areas where the filter fabric's at, and eliminate the warranty issue of the.
I'm fine with that, but I would still like to have stone on it, and I think.
Well, I still, still with stone.
We can make it like maybe a thinner stone, but wherever planning.
Point is, is we're not losing the warranty on the product. There's a hell of a difference in price between Armamax and filter fabric.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, big difference. Who cares if you cut the filter fabric?
You substitute, you substitute Armor Max in areas where you're gonna plant, plant litorals. Is that what you're saying?
You know, what I'm doing is trying to limit the litorals to where you would place the filter fabric.
So, in Timber Ridge, we, we restored the lake, that's, if you go over the bridge into Timber Ridge on the left, it was non-woven and Armor Max around, and then on the road, we did non-woven with litorals. I don't know how, what percent of the litorals survived. We did armor, we filled it, compacted it, put non-woven, and then we put about four inches of topsoil on it, and then we put litorals on it.
Well, how do they grow if there's no water?
I don't know, but, so, some of.
My problem, it doesn't work.
Well, so this is what happened. When it's time to plant, that was delayed for a few ponds, because they waited until the water level was high enough. We learned that mistake as well, because there was an issue, even though we had the vendor.
So, you got a chance that they grow in wet season?
So, you have to kind of wait, like, almost like to the last to plant it, when it's, it's more like the wet season. So, that's something that, that's easy, that's easy to adjust.
So, what I really wanna get is approval for Chelsea to approve this change order for eighty-seven hundred dollars to work with the LA to incorporate into our plans. We'll bring back, you know, how we're planning to incorporate that, we'll work on that.
As long as they understand there is an issue with, two issues. One, cutting the Armamax, and two, are you gonna get the water to survive these steers?
Right.
The planting time. So, we have a motion in a second, I'll call for vote.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, great, thank you.
And part of the water, it comes.
They don't go down there, Bob?
Well.
They don't go down there?
That would give you support.
Anything else?
That's it for me, and you guys have a lot left, sorry.
Yeah, you screwed up around eighty.
I'm gonna remember this one, because I didn't remember the one from March.
Okay, I move to table agenda item, agenda item eleven A until our next meeting on May second.
Our second.
On favor? Chelsea, okay, go for it.
You doing eleven B?
Sorry, yes.
Doing eleven B?
Oh, yes, I can do that, maybe. Put your pitchforks away. So, I'm sorry, for A, did you?
We tabled it.
Tabled it, okay, thank you. We'll follow up, we got the information, we'll get with Tetra Tech, um, everything. So, the golf carts, so, this is a very preliminary, um, let me scroll down, sorry, Laura's not here, and I'm not used to running both.
I'm actually listening in.
Okay, thanks, Laura. Laura, she's listening in. So, um, months ago, you all directed staff to reach out to Lee County about the shared use paths on Gateway Boulevard and Griffin, and about the potential use of golf carts on said paths. Um, in the background is the email response that I got from, uh, Lee County DOT, and I'm still, I'll have her report at the next meeting, but because I got this information, I wanted to pass it along to you all as an FYI. So, if you have specific questions, I would be more than happy to relay those to the county.
So, just, just so I'm clear, on the background, where's the response from the county? Is it that hole?
That.
That email is, comes from the county?
Yes.
Okay, now, what I don't see in here is enforcement. So, here's, here's the, here's the ruling. But does that mean anything?
So, I had a conversation with Flavia, um, the enforcement, I, I, I believe, and what I would interpret, which I can get clarification from the county, was it would be the sheriff.
Okay.
But I can confirm that from Lee County DOT.
Okay, the, the other issue, this, this is getting hot again. The people that come to the club, country club, and people that are visitors, they come across Gateway Boulevard in their golf carts, they come along the paths to get in. Who's, you say LS, uh, LCSO's gonna, uh, enforce?
I, I have to get clarification from the county.
We need, we need to answer that, because this is going to be a paperless tiger if they are not going to enforce it. So, even doing anything with it is a waste of time.
I, I, I mean, my personal opinion is, we were all shocked and surprised to even find out about this. I think it's one of those things that, if, if it's under county jurisdiction, we let the county handle it. I mean, my, my personal stance is, I'm not gonna poke this bear, because I, you know, I don't want to put us in a position.
You're at the guardhouse, okay? You're at the guardhouse, golf carts coming down the road, heading out toward Gateway Boulevard. You gonna sit there and open the gate for him? Knowing that it's illegal?
Well, but, but that's, there's no re, there's no enforcement there. It's not.
I'm sorry.
Is, is it the security agent's job to enforce Lee County?
Why did you knowingly allow that guy to go out there where he can't take that?
No, no, but the point is, your, your guard, your guard, that entity has no jurisdiction over, over the county. They are. Or authority.
No.
So, they're gonna open the gate regardless, unless, unless, unless Gateway Greens.
My deal is, I'm just gonna go back at it, that'd be the perfect person I'm gonna sue, because of the fact that he allowed it to happen.
But it's.
And he knew.
There's no jur, he has no, no enforcement, no jurisdiction.
I'm just telling you what an attorney will do.
I, I, I.
The issue is, we need to have them tell us, you're either gonna enforce this, or you're not. But this, but, Bob, you, you haven't seen it over in Gateway.
Okay, but here's, here's another. I'm reading all this, and this is exactly, exactly the condition that we argued about with C5. Because they put the multi-modal, C5, the west side of Tree Line Boulevard.
Yeah.
And the multi-modal path is within inches of the roadway. This says it's gotta be a five-foot setback.
That's in the county standards. That's, I did that from the beginning.
They did it, and I brought it up here, and they said, well, they got an exception. So, they make these standards, it means nothing. Tree Line did, County Road.
That's a city. That's the difference.
So, so, I had the conversation I had with Chelsea, and it was regarding the second, uh, paragraph, which based on the review of the existing conditions, Lee County cannot officially authorize the, uh, golf cart use along the Lee County roads and/or pass within the Lee County right-of-way. So, so for me, like, looking at the district, besides the safety, because we know that, that's the reason why it's here, the amount of damage that we have incurred on Griffin because of the golf carts, it's, it's a lot.
For the, from the landscaping.
From the landscaping, because they, they, on the right-of-way, so they don't wanna drive it on, on the sidewalk, which, which is what they were driving before. To me, if you're driving the sidewalk, the, the county doesn't enforce it, I'm fine with that.
Landscaping?
So, they're being going to the landscaping, there is no longer, there is no Bahia over there. It is gone.
You can't tell me that's from golf carts.
No, it is.
There's not that many golf carts that are gonna kill Bahia on a regular basis, really?
I, there's about fifteen golf carts that pick up on the, and I'm talking about.
I'm not saying obligatory.
They, the Gable Elementary, uh, like, from the Gable Elementary all the way to probably Bristol Park, that's what I'm talking about.
Because they take, they take.
Does he also damage the sprinkler heads?
Uh, there is no sprinkler on, on that area. So, so then what happened is, it actually, it created like a little, it created, you saw the pictures, it created a road. It looks like a, like a. A road. So then, because there's an issue, so, because they created a road, there's an issue with the vehicles. The vehicles are now driving on that area, and that's why the, the damage is so substantial. Because you have about, I would say, at a minimum, every day forty-five vehicles driving either on the sidewalk or on the right-of-way between the sidewalk and HOA properties.
And to pick up their kids.
Yes.
You know, we're. I think right now, we gotta wait till we get the final report, but I think you've gotta ask them the question. If you're not going to enforce this, if you're not going to enforce this, then why are you doing this?
So, I'll, I've got two follow-up, from what I'm hearing, is I've got the enforcement question, and then I've got the, hey, this, this specifically says paths or roads, but what about the rights of way, which include landscaping areas?
No, it does say here, within Lee County right-of-way. It does say that.
I'll get, I'll follow up clarification, and she did say that she could meet the May fourth deadline for the, her actual report and the findings. So, I, this, you will see this again at your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the ones that have LSVs, their best bet is to get them licensed to drive on the road.
Maybe that's why oak trees were put on the roads earlier.
Okay.
Thank you. This was the easy way out for them.
So, the, if you're ready, Flavia, for the next item?
Yes.
Okay, we've got, um, Eric and Steve on the line. We have ninety percent design of the admin building. And I, with that, I will turn it over to them to present.
Good afternoon, board members. This is Eric Five Tetra Tech. We have completed ninety percent design and are ready to submit permits with your approval. Uh, that includes the development order to Lee County and the environmental resource permit application to the South Florida Water Management District. The, uh, I think at the beginning of the meeting, Chelsea, you said the, you added the DO plans, the architectural plans were also part of the packet, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we've, we've got a little bit of work left to do during a hundred percent. Our, our schedule has us finishing up a hundred percent design, uh, in about four weeks, May seventeenth is our uh, deadline for that. Uh, permitting is, per schedule, supposed to wrap by mid-July. And then we'll, we'll enter the bid phase and, uh, finish that up. Probably in October, the schedule has us finishing September. But, uh, talking with Chelsea, we think we may wanna put this out to bid for sixty days, uh, rather than thirty. And she can get into that. Um, construction, i- in that case, would push back from November to late December twenty twenty-four. As far as what we have left to design in, uh, the, the building itself, uh, there are a few conflicts that were discovered through our clash modeling that need to be resolved. Uh, we discussed with Chelsea earlier this week that, uh, we may need to run power to that fire access gate on the site. We're following up the South Trail Fire District on that. Uh, my understanding from Grady Minor is that they want those gates to be motorized. Uh, so we'll confirm that. Um, on the on the site plan, uh, we did address the entrance road um, being too narrow, I think at a previous board meeting, we discussed the access issue with the parking lot there. There's a tight turning radius through the existing gate, it's my understanding that you plan to remove that fence before we go to construction. And, uh, as part of the admin building project, we will widen a portion of the roadway, uh, so that it's a consistent twenty feet.
Wait, say that again.
The existing entrance drive, uh, has a bottleneck as you, as you leave, we're gonna correct that, you can see that on the site plan. I think Chelsea's trying to find it.
Yeah.
You can kinda see it there with the existing curb line versus the proposed curb line.
Over here, at the existing pool entrance, it, it gets real small, um, so we just wanna be, have consistency.
So, that has been included, the fire access lane, uh, or, or egress drive, you can see over there, north of the building, onto Gateway Lakes Boulevard. Uh, I know, uh, Chelsea's still working with, uh, the HOA of Hampton Park to secure the easement for that. And there's gonna be an extreme.
Pause for one second, let me just give an update.
That's exactly what we talked about at the last meeting.
Yes, so, um, just as an update to that, in, in the interim, Hampton Park Board, everybody quit, other than one person. Um, they've reestablished and got members back, I met with two of them yesterday. Um, I met with Yvonne, and then I think the gentleman's name was Steve, got them up to speed and, and told them of the, all of the needs, um, for us. But then, um, they asked if I could, if Laura and I could go and do a presentation to their new board, cuz it's all new. Um, said that's fine, but we need to move on this sooner than later. Um, and I have authorized Grady Minor to move forward on starting the sketches and legals, cuz that's gonna take the most time. Uh, and that's four hundred dollars each, and I did convey, so it's essentially twenty-four hundred dollars, um, on sketches and legals for all of the easements that are needed. Um, and I believe that there are needs on both sides of the table, um, that we would agree, and they would agree for these easements, but they have to take it to their board for a final decision. Um, I did not mention any dollar value, I didn't say, like, as a, from a staff perspective, you know, if we can come to terms, it would be a zero cost from, but ultimately, they understand, and I made it very evident, that this board makes the final decision on if there would be any cost associated with these.
But this, this sa- saves their sign.
Yes.
Sounds to me like a win-win.
And a lands, and their landscape, and, and the sidewalk.
Sounds like a win-win.
I agree.
So, so that's, that's what my understanding was, and even after the president's council meeting, a few of them reached out, and they, they didn't see any issues or any problem moving forward with this. Um, so I was kinda caught off guard, surprised when you mentioned that they wanted their attorney to look at, and, you know, and then, I just don't necessarily wanna cause a delay, but my question regarding the easements, how many, what is, six?
There's six easements, and.
And are all related to this project?
Five of them are related to this project.
So, if there's anything that they will be, that they could hesitate for me, it's about one.
So, I'll, I'll be, let me run through them real quick, if, if you don't mind. So, we would need the easement for the monument, and any ancillary items that'll come, that come with that, lighting, et cetera. It would be landscaping around said monument. It would be a, the sidewalk that is partially on the district's property. And then, what, the three that, um, we would need from them, is if you see, here, I'll do it with, down here, the county's requiring us to put in the sidewalk, and there's a bunch of, um, equipment that's in the way here, so we would need an easement to tie into their existing sidewalk here, small easement. Eric.
Utility post.
Utility box.
Tom Cash fiber box.
So, there's that small sidewalk easement we would need, there's this easement we would need, and then not related to this, um, we're asking for an extension of an existing utility easement at their clubhouse for a lift station. So, while we were at.
That's the one that's not associated.
That's the one that's not associated, so.
Draw your little arrow on what is the current right-of-way line or property line right now, that's, that dot, which one of those dot, that line? So then the easement is to the north of that, cuz the rest of that was on our property.
Yeah, so, see, there's their sidewalk that comes kinda into our property here. Um, and then this little tie-in here, um, and then, of course, their entire monument. So, Tony's provided some boilerplate templates of typical landscape easements that kinda put into motion. Um, I emphasized that we were applying for permits, and that these permitting agencies would need to know this information as part of their review. So, I was emphasizing to Hampton Park the urgency of this.
I have a question, um, it's not around the easement, so I'll wait till we're done with that.
That's, I, if you have any questions.
Remind me again, why we didn't tie into the existing pathway? Like, so when you come into the pool, why didn't we tie into that as opposed to creating a brand-new? So.
Here?
So, like, here's, I know you guys can see on both, but, so we come in this way, and we go to the pool here, and then there's a spot that's for road expansion. Why didn't we tie in there as opposed to building a brand-new road, parallel to, to what's in the, uh, in the poolway?
The pool would be a stand, I, I get what you're saying, the pool would be a standalone site with its own parking.
Talking about the road.
Yeah, I'm talking about like, so right here, so, right here is a spot, when you, if you come around the pool area, when you get around that roundabout, there is a spot that's designed for road, road expansion, it seems like. Why didn't we just tie into that as opposed to creating a brand-new, bro, cuz now we've got non-buildable area.
You're saying just move this like this way?
Yeah, just come here.
Yeah.
Or, I don't, not a.
Then you're forcing everybody through the pool parking lot, and for me.
Or even.
For me, from, from a safety perspective, I'd rather not have cars in the pool part of, in a lot of thoroughfare through a pool parking lot with children and things like that, but we're at ninety percent, really, I mean, big changes are gonna cost change orders, I'm not saying.
No, that's, I just want a justification, because I, you know, I, I love everything that we're doing, but we only have fifty-five acres. So if we don't maximize it, then we're, we're eating into, I think it's fifty-five acres?
I think it's fifteen, seventeen.
I'm sorry, I was thinking fifteen, I mean, fifteen, fifteen, seventy, whatever. Uh, and then, the other question that I have is, um, we did talk about the, one of the previous meetings, the awning outside of the boardroom area.
Yep, so, as of right now, um, you'll, it's kind of hard to see, I'm gonna scroll in. It's a, it, it would be a small, see these two little pedestals, that awning would go and cover that front entrance, it would not extend all the way out as.
No, but I thought we said we were gonna take it down further.
Original, like, so the main, the main is here, and you just take it side, like, an extension?
This one here?
Yes.
No, 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 the one next to the boardroom.
Here.
Yeah, well, I thought we were gonna expand that long way to give more covered area in the event of, you know, like, if we had to send people out, you know, uh, for a closed-door session, or if people are waiting to get in, it would be more covered area for them to sit.
So, Doug, you're talking, so we're gonna have one right here, so.
Seven, I'm sorry.
So, we would extend it, well, this is, we would extend it this way, but probably.
But, I will say, there are some concerns with that handicap spot there, and impeding their access if we continue to put columns out even further. But, as, I mean, we just have a small one here right now that would provide that, but otherwise, they could go out this, this way through the main and have that whole entire covered area.
That's fine, I just, I thought we had, I thought we talked in one of the previous meetings about extend, expanding that covered area outside of the boardroom, if, if that's not part of the plan, that's fine.
But I thought that during board meetings and stuff, you were going to be closing doors, be.
They can't use that.
Yeah, be, between the center area and all the other office area.
That's what, that's why I thought we had agreed to do that, because we're gonna have, you could enter in that area, right?
So, like, right after the restrooms, there were gonna be doors that would close. So that you wouldn't have to keep the whole building open while there is a meeting, but it, but to your point.
Or get vacate afterwards, when the, the office closes at four thirty or five, we stay past five, you don't have to.
Right.
I'm getting there, sorry, guys.
Like, something very similar to, the, the new school had it.
That's, hold on, that is that side, that's the center, so there's this would be the front entry, and, and again, these doors, this is secure, this is open, and then, hold on, let me go to the.
But I thought there were gonna be doors.
There's, yep, there's.
Restrooms, the men and the women's restrooms.
Yeah, there, there are, that's the covered area.
That were going to be closed when work was over.
The, this.
If the meeting kept on going, or if you were renting it out over.
The, the public will have access up to the, the front entrance area.
But see that door?
But I thought you wanted the public to have.
So, they would have access from the lobby to, cuz the bathrooms.
No, but go back to the section where the boardroom is, there is a door.
Yes.
Okay, there's a door, right there, where the, where the, no, 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 on the, uh.
Outside.
The outside entrance, yeah, where there's the, the cover. I thought we had talked at the last meeting, that door's great there, because we could use it as a, an entrance and an exit to keep, as a, even if we wanted to not have people come through the regular building. And, that's where we're talking about expanding that, that covered area, so.
So, do you wanna expand it further? Than, than this covered area, which Eric, do you know, do you know what this covered, what this is?
Can we expand it?
Do I?
Like the, how wide, how far?
I mean, it, it extends a couple feet, maybe beyond the limits of those columns, so, um, you'd have to go to the roofing plan to, to see the exact extent of it, um, but, you know, the thing is. Go ahead, Steve.
The columns are about eight feet off the building, and the, and the, uh, roof extends about two feet beyond that, so roughly, you've got about a ten-by-ten area there. It, it was never intended as a gathering, it was just a place to cover the door if it's raining, so you don't, you know, have to knock on the door, waiting for someone to open it, or, you know, uh, as you're entering the building.
The, the conversation that we had at the last meeting was instead of having people come in the main entrance or leave after hours, it could be more convenient to have that as a way for people to come into the meeting, exit the meeting, and if we're gonna do that, would we want to expand the covered area there, in the event that people are waiting to get in, or, you know, raining after the meeting? I think, I thought we were, it's ten feet and, you know, eight feet in length?
Eight feet from, Steve, correct, correct me, eight feet from the door.
Right, the column, yeah, it's roughly eight by eight to the columns, and then you get two feet of overhang, so about ten by ten coverage.
Yeah, I, I thought we, we talked about maybe just expanding that, the width, not the the length, not the width.
As you, as you expand the width, the roof gets taller, we've got that set so that that little roof does not interfere with the bigger roof over the.
What's, it's a pitch on there?
Yeah, it's, it's a hip roof, and as you make that wider, that roof gets taller, and so you start to get into a little bit of a collision with the bigger.
As an entrance and exit, but it won't be a gathering area, so if there's rain, people are just gonna have to hang inside the building, wait.
Well, they can, they'll still have access to the lobby.
Yeah, okay, the other area, uh, just thing I want, and I know we, we might have talked about it, but, so if I'm looking at, if you go back to the office space side, there are eleven offices there and a copy room. Uh, that's all administrative, including Public Works, there are three utility offices.
Yes.
Okay.
Those are back here, utility, here.
These are all, and I wanna just focus on the office areas on that wing. They're all office spaces.
Yes.
So, not every employee is at a level that would need an office. Maybe there is, um, but what I don't see here that most office spaces have is an area where you can put multiple cubicles uh, for staff that does not require to close a door or to have a dedicated office space, was, what's the consideration there? Is there any consideration? Like, if you go to expand, let's say you've got an intern, you've got someone, your GIS person, you've got, you know, individuals that don't need a dedicated, uh, office space, we don't have a common area where you can put multiple cubicles as a workstation.
I, I believe the last two offices right next to Public Works and Parks and Recs, those were, what Carol mentioned, those offices, they're unassigned. So, we could use that, we asked for that, so that's what those are, see this right here?
Yeah, but my point is, that would normally be an open space, cuz right now, I guess you could put two desks per office, but if that was a larger space, you could put six cubicles in there. You could put eight potential cubes in there, so you, it just allows you for more growth. Again, not everyone needs an office space, as a matter of fact, in some cases, I would argue that you would not want to have closed office spaces for certain roles. Just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Couldn't you open up those last two offices?
Yeah, my recommendation.
Just making it an open space, and if later on you need an office, then you.
You could close it.
Put a wall in and close it up.
I don't know, what's the dimension on those offices, they're thirteen by?
Twelve.
Twelve?
The, the last two, like thirteen feet by?
About twelve.
Looks like thirteen oh.
Thirteen oh this way, and that, but this distance, twelve, Steve?
Thirteen by two, so you have.
Yeah, in, in that direction, it's about twelve.
Yeah, so, I mean, honestly, what you could do is, I mean, you could put uh, a cube of four, so you could put four, eight, probably twelve working stations in it, if you needed to. Uh, so my only recommendation is, you know, make that last space maybe more flexible or open, where you could put some cubes in there, that's just my recommendation, if you guys don't, don't agree, or if you're perfectly confident that everyone will get an office space, and you'll maybe have two or three people in an office if you go to grow, or, I don't think you need an intern in an office space, but, you know, we just don't have any place to put them.
I would envision like an intern as an example to share with whoever their, their mentor, or whoever they're, they're shadowing.
From the same office.
Yeah.
So, that's.
Well, but, but who would, who would an intern be shadowing?
Elle, Elle was, Elle had an intern.
So, would Elle want to have an intern in her office twenty-four-seven when she's having some conversations?
That would be what the staff conference room or other rooms are available for.
Again, my recommendation would be to not, to leave a flexible space at the end of that, leave it open, don't build it out, have it an open area, that you could be flexible.
You mean combined room one twenty-two and one twenty-four?
Yeah, it would be an open space.
But just eliminate the two walls.
It would be an open space.
Two doors, that's all you do. No.
Hold on one second, flip it to the other side, the other wing, cuz we have the E O C room, right? And that's totally open.
Yeah, but you wouldn't put.
And it, you could, you could put cubicles in there.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be optimal, cuz you're, then now you're splitting your workspace areas.
Or do, yeah.
I, I mean.
Or turn the E O C into the staff conference room and use that staff conference room as your flex space.
But then you're then you're basically taking out design areas and substituting it with something else, that's, so plan ahead, plan ahead for non-essential employees, when I mean by non-essential, I mean those that don't need privacy in an office, create a space for them, so you have flexibility and, you know, for growth.
So, all you're requesting is to remove the two walls and the two doors?
Yeah, yeah. Twenty-four, which would just be an open space.
All right.
Twenty-two and twenty-four are both twenty.
One twenty-four.
The last.
And one twenty-three.
Just have this.
And one twenty-three.
So, that, that, that in, would just be an open space. And to make sure we have, now, the consideration from, from a design perspective would be, you need to make sure that you have.
The outlets.
Outlets.
Outlets and your.
Okay, so Eric, so is that consensus from the board?
Anybody have an issue with it?
I like that idea.
I don't, I, I'm fine with it, because it reflects, if we needed to be in office, we'll put a wall on one of the sides and that's, yeah.
I'm okay with it.
What's the total cost that we've got budgeted for this building? I thought we were around three.
Four million.
Huh?
Four point four.
No, 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 what we, what we had budgeted originally, I thought it was around three million.
I thought three-five.
To pull up the budget.
Well, my point is, is what's our, what's our plan when the bids, if they come in like this, we gotta cut a half a million to a million dollars out, what are we gonna do? What's our plan?
I have some alternative funding source ideas.
Some what?
Alternative funding source ideas. Like the park impact fees that are sitting.
So, I'm, I'm not talking about anything that would generate the need and necessity of increased money for the public, I'm talking about grant. What do we have that would grant us funds to do this, because I, I think, I'm a firestorm, if we, we tell people this thing's gonna cost over four million dollars.
Please keep in mind, there's a thirty percent contingency.
At this point in time, that's what you want.
Yeah.
That's what you want.
Yeah, so I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I think we should be considering that, but I, but I don't know if that's, I think we don't cross that bridge till we get there.
What, what I would, what I'd ask.
The offices for, just for a second, get that one resolved, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, that would just be one thing that you could do to cut, but I'm, I'm looking at this building, trying to think of, if we have to cut a million dollars or eight hundred thousand dollars out of it, the options are slim, I mean, this thing is designed not such that it is an easy deal to handle, uh, a cutback, it is what it is. The options are slim. I mean, this thing is designed not such that it is an easy deal to handle uh, a cutback. It is what it is.
Well, I think.
And I, I think that we better be thinking about that because that's gonna be a tough show at four million bucks.
What push comes to shove, to your point, there may not, there might not be a lot of opportunities to offset a million and a half in this current design. So you'd have to figure out where do we offset a million and a half in the overall budget?
What are, what are you talking about?
Saying you, like if, if you're saying this, the, the cost for this, if let's, if it, it goes over what we have budgeted, you either reduce the building or.
What you do is you have a design that anticipates what you're going to do if you have to cut something. Right now, I don't see anything in this, whether it's outside or the road, what you suggested might be some deal on the road.
But it's, I mean.
But, but that's minimal.
Yeah, it's minimal. What I'm saying is from a residence perspective, it's, I mean, let's say the building is four, we're four and a half, we're a million over budget. They might complain about us spending four and a half million on admin, but it's how it affects them from an assessment perspective. So we would have to say, okay, we're gonna offset your assessment the total budget by a million and a half. We have to find that money somewhere else. We have to save that money somewhere else if we can't do it in this building. We just, we.
My, my whole deal for bringing it up is do we have, have the architects come up with a plan of where we could cut, let's say, a half a million dollars, a half a million dollars.
I don't know if that's even doable.
Chelsea has, we've talked about the impact fees that if, did you get an answer first from the county?
I, I have to talk to Tony about the, the community park impact fees for, that are, that the, that the county has sitting in a pot over there. Um, because I, I, I've got to touch base with Tony and get his legal opinion on the use of those because I think that funding is additional three hundred and some thousand could be potentially used for the parking lot.
Well, the, the issue I'm getting to is, is I'm not, I'm, I'm looking at a grant or a deal that does not cost people money. So that, if impact fees would work, great. But the issue is, is that we need to have a plan and the architects need to put together and tell us that, hey, if this thing comes out, what do we do? Cut out the first two, last two rows of buildings? What, what are our options? I don't see, this is a very, very innovative plan that does not have a lot of room to do cutting. I mean, there's just no place to cut.
And I think that's. I'd almost say that's the position. If we came down to it, say, hey, we're a million over budget. I don't know if I would even be able to say I'd co, I'd be comfortable cutting, you know, four offices and making the building smaller because then
They're used for it.
Then we're, we're basically building something that we're gonna outgrow. And so I would say we would either come up with alternative funding or find other pathways to save that million dollars somewhere else. But I understand what you're saying. Let's look for opportunities. Let's still.
I would love to get us through to, through permitting.
Questions.
Get it out to bid and see, and see what those bids come back.
But usually, usually, well, the reason I say do it the other way, Chelsea, is when you know there's an opportunity, it's going to happen. What you usually do is you prepare alternative bids. I'd like to take and have as an alternative bid what our solution is to get a price of what the alternative is going to produce. In other words, we caught Plan A one. Plan A one is something in here that's lessened and we have the contractors bid it. So if we want to cut out A one, you're gonna save a half a million dollars. You're gonna save three hundred thousand. Put the pencil in their pocket to tell us what that's going to be. Cause if you take and go out for bid, you're gonna do the same thing to go back and find the price, or you're gonna do it the worst way, and that's do it as a change order and you're gonna lose.
So Tetra Tech.
You're not gonna get a dollar for a dollar. You're gonna get fifty cents at best for a dollar.
So Eric and Tetra Tech have already made that comment, you know, hey, we need to start discussing what, what, how, how can we trim this?
Have they come up with anything?
I ha, I just got the ninety percent last week and we, we just had our very brief overview on Monday. So I was hoping to get final comments from you all. Us provide final comments next week and have that conversation. Ed, I'm all ears. If, if, if this board or yourself can come up with ways that we can
Well, this, this has been my discussion all along. The square footage and the cost of the structure is, is blowing our budget. It's blowing our budget. And we didn't build within our budget. We just built in within our dream. And now we gotta pay for it. And you don't do engineering that way. Architects do because they don't have dollar bills, but engineers don't do it that way. You need to come up with what a plan is. If you haven't got enough money to pay for.
I'm fine to consent, continue proceeding, uh.
With the, with the two changes, removing the doors and the walls, right?
Yeah.
Not a, okay. Yeah, yes.
I have some other questions. Um, but are you done?
No, I'm done, yeah.
Okay. Um, if we could go to page one, one, five, which is the exterior of the building. The exterior picture of the building.
Ten. Can you just, oh, did I pass it?
You have to do the, those are, that's structural. You've gotta go the other way.
Other way in the beginning?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, guys.
There.
Okay.
There.
That's not the colors, I promise.
No, um, well, I had to make this a whole lot larger, but um, two different things. What is the exterior material that we are using on this? Is it? What, well, just what, what, what is the exterior material?
We have, the building, it's structurally, it's load-bearing masonry with stucco as the finish. And the base, you can see there's kind of a wainscot around the bottom. That's split face concrete block, uh, sort of creating that base to the building.
So that's not stone or anything? That's concrete block?
It's, it's split face concrete block, which means it has a rough texture to it. It's been, the face of the block has been split, so it looks very rough.
And then below that.
No, no.
Stripe. I'll call it a stripe. Below the stripe, what is that? Is that?
Uh, I, I, I think.
Is that wood?
I think what you're seeing is basically a, a sort of a little bit of a ground plane. That white stripe is the split face block. And that is lowest point of the wall. Above the split face block is stucco on concrete block.
And what's below it?
Down there. Split face blocks at the base.
Go to drawing A two oh two, because A two oh two shows something totally different than shown on the elevation views. A two oh two shows concrete block all the way up.
Okay, hold on.
To the bottom of the windows.
Nope.
It's, it's.
It's different than the, the, the pictorial that's shown on the, the, the cover page. So in other words, it looks like you're using split face block all the way up to the bottom of the windows.
Yes, we're, we're taking split. We're taking split face.
I don't have any problem. It, it's just the, the picture, one picture looks like it's a band of split face block when in reality it's full face block.
No, no, it's, no. If I can just explain it. The bottom of the building, you see that lot of lower bottom, about three feet to the bottom of the windows? That's split face. Above that is stucco over concrete block.
I agree, I agree. But that, if you look at the very front of your picture of the plans, it doesn't show the same thing.
You're, you're.
That, that, that rendering is taken at a bizarre angle and I don't like it. And it, and it's a little bit of a ground plane era.
Okay, got you, got you.
It's, it's, it's just not representative of what's there. And then the roof is standing seam metal.
Got you. It's what? Standing seam metal?
Standing seam metal, yes.
Okay.
All right, so it appeared to me that there were in essence, three colors on the outside. The one up above, then you've got the stripe and then below that.
No, there is nothing below the split face block. The split face block will be whatever color we decide when we do a color scheme. That's something that you guys or, or Chelsea can have an input on. The stucco will be again, whatever color we decide that to be. I'm seeing that, you know.
So there's only two colors.
Well, and the roof has its own color too. So, yeah.
I think that band you're seeing at the bottom is the foundation. So what Steve's explaining is the split, the split face concrete block is all you'll see. The, the tannish colored band you see below that is below grade.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Oh, okay. So then, uh, I also noticed that there's a, a generator that we're installing on the back of the building.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that? Do we intend it so, or to allow any portion of the building to be a storm shelter then?
No.
Yes and no. It will be for the staff when they're working. So if the staff is working during a hurricane, because that happened here.
But not for the public.
Not for the public. Our shelter is right here at the Gateway High School, the, the Brune New School. It's right there as our shelter.
That, that's rated to storm shelter.
So that would, it would, that would never enter in?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
This building is not built to FEMA standards to be used as a storm shelter or safe room.
Okay, and then I did not see any numbers in the initial thing for landscaping. The, the, the very first page, which is, I, I don't know what number it is anymore. But where it listed out all the costs, I did not see anything for landscaping.
There's seventy-six thousand dollars in civil site for landscaping.
And then there's another.
Oh, is that what it, that, that's landscaping?
Yeah.
Okay, seventy-six thousand?
I thought I saw another seventeen thousand somewhere as well.
Yeah. It's under, it's on the first page under civil site. You got landscaping, a little under seventy-seven thousand and irrigation's twelve thousand.
Okay.
And we have lighting there underneath that at zero because you're, you decided to use FPL.
Okay, so, and then my final question is from the building and the parking lot, along um, Gateway Boulevard there, between the road and the actual building, how much space is there that looks like it's just all grass right now?
It's fifty, fifty-five point seven feet. If you look at the setback on the overall site plan, it has dimensions on it.
Okay, so, so Chelsea, if you go, take your little arrow and go all the way down at the bottom.
Okay, hold on. Oh, there we go. Okay.
Okay, go all the way down to the, okay, a little more to the right, right? Okay, no, left. Stop, stop. Go up. Up. Okay, so from the end of that building, all the way over, in other words, how much grass area is right here? Are we talking an acre to, yeah, over to where the road is? Are you talking two, three acres?
I think you.
And that road goes right through the middle of it.
It goes up here to road.
In other words, is it, is it the idea to just leave it all grass?
Until you determine otherwise as, as a board. Yes, ma'am, until you determine otherwise.
Have, have you guys talked in the past about doing something with that or not doing something?
About doing a lot of this.
Anything that has to do with park has not made it off the ground.
The idea is the first thing to do is put the needed administrative building there.
Right.
Phase one, and then phase two would be whatever else.
Whatever else.
Whatever else. And that's part of what the park committee is put in place for is to help us determine after phase one, which is the administrative building.
Right.
What else? If anything.
Have you seen the park plans? Probably not.
You mean the original park plan?
The latest, the latest. I think we should send Carol the latest because there are some greens, they, they're called green space areas. And then probably that's what would use there. It, it may not be.
We don't know. Let's not speculate.
But yeah.
It's amphitheaters, all kinds.
The, that park plan, Carol, is in the PrAC agenda packet. And we did include, I had Eric overlay this admin building and parking lot, et cetera, over that old whole Montez plan. So that way PrAC Works and Work Advisory Committee could see the impact of this on that old, old plan.
That, that took a pretty good footprint.
Yes.
Yeah. Cut them out.
Yeah.
Okay, those, those were my questions.
All right, any other questions at the building? We can just.
I had one and it had more to do with the parking lot than any of them. Gonna be providing any electrical charging stations for Teslas and things like that. And is it a requirement to do that or?
It's not a requirement, but uh, I believe that's something we could, we could do after the fact.
I just didn't have those in the current money.
It is not currently planned. Okay.
To answer the earlier question, that, that space south of the building i- is around an acre and a half.
So it says, is there, is there, this is ninety percent. So we're submitting permits with the, the, the changes that were suggested today. I'm removing of those two walls and, and the doors. Any final comments? Cause this is going to permitting.
Well, I think we gave it to you.
How, how, uh, how confident are you in that cost estimate? Have you talked to contractors and gotten uh, pre-bid estimates from them or is this purely architectural pricing?
I believe this is just architectural pricing. Um, we haven't done any pre-bid uh, discussions with contractors.
So we'll add, we'll do the next one then.
So do, do you need a motion or something to continue?
That, that would be good to, for the record.
I will move that we um, continue uh, up to um, one hundred percent of design feedback.
Second.
Including permitting.
Include, yes, including whatever Tony says I should put in there.
No, first is including the change, which is removing the two walls and the, and the doors and making a flex space.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. On favor?
Thank you. We're on D. Did that one. Eleven, D. Okay. The long awaited. Median. Yeah, always say.
That's what I say, we're just a little.
Okay, um, so a little, Flavia, do you wanna do the history or do you want me to?
So we provision?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we met, we, we went back, we met with some of the residents on, in Stony Brook. We took their feedback. Uh, after their original uh, request to what went there. Looking at overall picture and what matches uh, Gateway and what we have established in the other areas. We wanted to kind of stay within the same plan to, so you'll be cohesive. Um, and we came up with a solution to go ahead and concrete the bull noses all the locations except the first one, do annual flowers immediately after the bull noses. And uh, and do the additional planting. So um, we took those notes and we gave it to Keith. Keith contacted, I think, two vendors to get the concrete pricing and in mainscape to give us our price. And that's what you'll see over there.
So is the advisory group happy with this?
So I talked to Margaret today, um, and at first there was some feedback there, uh, not from Margaret, from someone else that they thought it was gonna be like a final approval coming back to some of the individuals at Sony Brook. Um, but when I talked to Margaret, she felt very confident that the input that the individuals from Stony Brook, Sony Brook gave was part of the consideration of the final design. And we talked with Margaret today, she feels like that she's comfortable with the solution that the, the biggest thing is they didn't want shell and some of the initial things they were completely against, that this design is at least in alignment with what their vision was. Maybe not some of the plannings are exactly what, what was recommended, but they were fine with. That's what I heard.
So there's, there was a plan, you know, Flavia.
Right.
Took some time out with those residents, um, and then with staff and put together this plan. We took that plan and gave it to our main, mainscape, our, our vendor, and they, they had a different recommendation on some of the plants, but it seems like.
It was just one plant. And it's actually, it is, is the same plant. So instead of the plant being a reddish shade, it has more of a maroon shade. That is the only difference.
Except the, the.
The black tie sister versus the red tie sister. So it's just a different shade on. That's it. Nothing, nothing else.
So just my suggestion, and I know we put in here the um, not to exceed, if this computer works, the not to exceed amount of the twenty-six thousand. If you wouldn't mind bumping that up just to thirty, just in, in case we miss anything, we don't wanna cut it short. Um.
Thanks for your.
So actually, I'll tell you this, if you want to know exactly, we did, we did miss uh, similar riopeds. So uh, an additional six hundred and fifty of them will cost us six thousand one hundred and seventy-five and that's missing.
So we need a little bit more than.
Yes.
Thirty-four thousand?
So.
No, thirty thousand.
No, well, thirty's not enough.
Well.
Fix is missing, we're currently.
We're, we're missing sixty-two hundred dollars.
Okay.
So you want to just do thirty-five to be, have a buffer? So I'll make a motion to approve. Do you have something else?
Yes, a big question. So I thought that we had a lengthy discussion two meetings ago, that if it's a line item that it's in the budget and we have the money for the budget, it does not come to this board for approval.
Well, I think this one's probably needed to come to board because of just the sensitivity of the design. Not so much, not so much the dollar amount, but more.
The board has been very involved in this project and that's, I, I'm, I am under the same opinion. Flavia, I, that's, well, that's my understanding, but because this has been so contentious and the board has been very involved, I wanted transparency.
So I will make. So I will make the motion to approve the recommendation of the, um, meeting on Gateway Boulevard in front of Stony Brook with, uh, a not to exceed of thirty-five thousand.
Oh, sir.
On favor?
All right, thank you very much. Oh, I should've had Steven stay for this one, okay. No, it's okay. So we have been talking in, in, for months now about point repairs and we have the funding and the, um, bond. And so we wanted a clear direction and policy from the board on how to proceed and how to categorize said point repairs. I took a stab at this. Had staff take a stab at this. Had Tetra Tech take a stab at this. And so this is a draft version, and I emphasize draft because I really would love your input on this. On this standard or points, point repair standard that we would implement. And that's how we would determine, um, which areas get prioritized based on severity, based on, I don't know why there's exclamation, question marks.
Every T, yeah.
Every T is a question mark.
Replace the T.
That's odd, so anyway, I'm looking for your, your input and your feedback on this, understanding this is draft.
What's the difference between this and what we did over at one-twenty-five that resulted in another failure? I don't see any difference.
I'm not familiar.
He's, he's talking about the method and how. Method is no different.
This repair looks exactly what they did at one-twenty-five and it failed, utterly failed.
Where, where is one-twenty-five?
Uh, it's over Cypress Links.
Okay, um, I'm not familiar with that, but th- this, this repair, uh, was provided by Tetra Tech. Again, if, if you don't agree, we, this is a draft version, please, please, please give us feedback.
But the, the thing that happened is the flow, the flow coming off the slope at the upper end. Sheet flowed across that yard, went down right into this swale dump, uh, eroded area and just took all that field dirt and put it right out in the middle of the lake.
Did that have that fabric on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it just was almost textbook, that same picture. The only thing I see that might be a little different is that detail B. As where they're trying to take and prevent that water that's coming off the slope from getting underneath that fabric. That's the only thing I can think of. Yeah, step B. And then I, I guess the, they're going with the, uh, same geotextile on the top. And then the stone on top of that.
I, I would've just, I would've asked for the addition of the tollstone, cause you only have the number four. And we, didn't we have that issue with Gateway Greens that it all went down the pond, the number four?
We didn't have any, we didn't have a tolls slope.
So we, right here in the bottom, the four, the, uh, six twelve or eight to.
We had like the taco.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the bigger stone to hold.
All right.
And then, and then if we're gonna go with this, rather than taking and jumping into it, I would be willing to take, let's say, since, uh, that pond out there still looks in the same condition, go out there and redo it in a point area and do a pilot.
Cypress, you said Cypress?
Cypress Links, yeah, I think it's one-twenty-five.
Do you have anything?
No, but it sounds like maybe since this is a draft, you should take these comments and we should table this to the next meeting and bring it back.
I had no intention of adopting this, I just wanted feedback and then we would go back, talk to Tetra Tech.
One more feedback, but go ahead, Bob, do you have any feedback on this? Okay, regarding the priority pond areas, we have resident properties, roadway, commercial and golf course. I, while we're putting the commercial on number three, I mean, they do pay.
I bel- I believe this was taken from, from that, our, our adopted priority list, cause we went from, that's the ranking that we did.
Okay, so I would, I, I don't know, but I, I don't wanna penalize the commercials for, I would do residential properties, commercials, roadways, golf courses and other.
I've never heard any feedback.
I think it's very minor, the, the commercial areas that need it, if any.
The only reason I.
We, we don't have that much, yeah.
The only reason I, I put it in this order was to say consistent with the priority list.
Then it's fine. I don't have anything.
Put the golf course below that.
Put that one in tomorrow.
Okay, so were there any other comments back on this?
Never quits, never, never quits.
Okay, so we will bring back, uh, and the edited version with feedback from you all to your next board meeting. And then, um, at that point, you can authorize the, uh, pilot project for there in Cypress Links. All right, we're moving along, finally. Next one is the monthly reports, um, since Laura is, well, she's, it looks like she might be on, on the line. So I wanted to draw, uh, your attention to, uh, we had some reports in Gateway Greens of some streetlights that have been out. Um, we've got some pricing for said streetlights and it's up to the tune of about ten thousand dollars. Uh, we expended all those funds with Hurricane Ian, I, even though we are asking for insurance, doing a claim to recoup it, I just wanted, uh, direction on if those lights, if you'd like for us to get those repaired, um, anticipating the FPL conversion, hoping by the end of the year.
I had questions.
Those, those lights are on the main drag and it's dangerous as hell at two major intersections, we need to get those lights fixed. They're as just as important as the lights out on Gateway Boulevard.
Is there a not to exceed figure that you would recommend?
Seventy-eight plus twenty-five. Thank you.
My question is. So eleven thousand.
Yes ma'am.
My question is prior to that, are those the lights that we talked about a few years ago? That, that's gonna kill me now, that they are, are, are they Gateway Greens lights or are they Gateways lights?
CDD lights.
So I think I, I asked Tony to do some research on the lights. Um, I, I, from my understanding, since I started here, it's my understanding that they were CDDs, but I did ask Tony to do some homework and, and research and.
I've started that, I started it earlier with Brian when he was here. And, um, and I have a folder already generated, I'll have a report the next board meeting as to that.
Purely show their CDD lights.
Yeah, I believe there may have even been a borrowing note, uh, for that in a project for Callaway Greens and those areas. Callaway Greens, Cypress Links also, uh, a, a street lighting project.
No.
No.
The, the, the only lights that CDD has that are in Gateway and the reason they did it, because it goes back to the original development, is because of the country club. It was a community, uh, deal, so they had to have lights to get there. So all of the lights that come into this community, uh, on the roads, West Links and Gateway Greens Drive are all CDD lights.
I think there was, the contracts, the contracts had E designations, like E-one, E-two, E-three, for electrical work, I believe, so I, I started pulling some of those, I'll have those, uh, and report to the next board meeting.
Yeah, cause the, the lights in Callaway Greens are all, uh, FPL. The lights in Cypress Links are FPL.
Yeah, they just may have funded those and.
Yeah, I have no idea what WCI did on that or West Link.
Reason why I was asking, it, it's really, when it's coming to the cost, we just got, uh, the estimate for FPL to do, to have them install eight streetlights in Magnolia. Everything, the boring, all the work, the total for that, that FPL once upfront cost is twenty-one hundred dollars. I don't know how many lights are here.
This, the segment that's out, it's got, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eleven or twelve lights, eleven or twelve. And here's, here's the deal, we were told that it was FPL, or we thought that it was FPL. FPL says it's not us. But the issue is, and I don't understand this down here in Florida, it's a little weird. Us, we, Gateway, our service ends at the meter and the responsibility of the owner starts up at the other side of the meter. Everything we do, that's not the way FPL works. FPL, they have the power from the transformer to the meter, okay? That's ours. That's their position they're taking. Talking to Bentley Electric. That deal, which in my opinion is nothing different than a service line at the CDD on a water or sewer, they say is our problem, so we have to take care of it all the way to the meter. And as I understand it, the problem of why we don't have power is between those two points. And those two points aren't that far apart. Not that far apart.
Well, but for that string and then we have the one that's at the entrance to the clubhouse, that it's, that's, that's the second quote, which is a whole separate one.
That, that's another one that I don't understand. Plans upstairs show that there is a conduit going from the pole on the right-hand side, which is powered, over to the pole on the left. The conduit is there. We ran a tape through the conduit and then put a, a device on it to measure where it was going. Instead of going across the street, it went parallel to the street and then just stopped. So we have no idea where it goes. The bottom line is you go over to the other receiving pole and there's a conduit, but there's nothing in it. Somebody has pulled the wire, and I'm saying this goes back ten years. Pulled the wire and there is no connection between those two poles, but the plans make it perfectly clear.
They were.
They are, they were connected.
So I just wanted to know, would it be faster to just go with FPL? Cause I just don't know their turnaround time or with Bentley, cause I know with FPL will be cheaper, but there's way more lights now than what I thought it would be.
What, what is that? I don't understand what else, FPL would have anything to do with this.
Are we doing the transition?
We're gonna, we're gonna do a conversion for all.
Question was, any of those lights included?
As the third phase of this, yes.
Okay, so would.
As long as they're GS CDD lights, yes.
So would it bring, because there's a need for them to get it then right now to bring those forward.
We haven't even seen a proposal, I'm, I'm a little behind, I guess. Somebody's gonna have to do a lot of talking to convince me to go with FPL. Their track record in this community is horrible.
Well, the, the photometrics are done, then they've moved it to design and they're anticipating bringing that in front of the board probably in July, the second meeting in July, is what I got.
What are they gonna tell us that, 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 what lie are they going to tell us? That they've been telling us for seven months, they tell us they're gonna come in and fix stuff, they don't fix it. They, I, I'll tell you, unless something changes drastically, I am voting vehemently, no, against changing FPL. vehemently. They, they lie to you. They don't fix what they've got and, and better yet, they charge you for it.
But.
I've got twelve lights out that I'm paying eighteen dollars a month for and have for seven months since the hurricane. They don't give you any break, they charge you for it. That's, that's my favorite deal.
Right now, we have a safety issue.
Yes, we have a safety issue, need to get fixed.
So I will move that we, when, when Tony determines that this is GS CDD property, then we can move to award these contracts not to exceed eleven thousand dollars.
I'll second that. So all, we have a motion a second, on favor?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I wouldn't spend a lot of money on that, Tony, it's, it's known fact that they belong to the CDD. Have been, has been, we've been maintaining them for years.
Yeah, I was just gonna double check and pull it ahead.
So just, I just wanna touch on a couple of things that the board asked. Um, we did put a hiring status, a very overview. These numbers I pulled from, uh, paychecks for both the, um, utilities director and our public works director. And if you don't mind, if I could take the moment, a moment right now to introduce you to our new public works director, Andrew Johnston. If you wanna come on up and just kinda do a quick intro.
Who's already got kudos because he sat through this whole meeting so far.
Just enter it yourself and then, um, just give us a little blurb about.
Yep, I'm Andrew Johnston, so, um, happy to be here. First of all, I'm pretty excited. I appreciate the opportunity to help. Um, I think I can, um, I bring a lot to the table in terms of my background. Most of my background is, it's been about fifty percent government, fifty percent in private. Um, and I bring a lot of maintenance, um, management background, uh, to the table. I've had a, a couple of successful implementations of programs and, um, hoping to bring some of that knowledge, uh, here and, and hopefully help out quite a bit, so.
So he is on day two?
Day three.
Day three? So, uh, please make it a point to schedule some time with him. Um, he's getting his bearings this week, so, um, but definitely in the near view, near future, take some time, um, and schedule some time with, with Andrew. So we are actively recruiting the projects, uh, manager position. We had two very good interviews today.
Yeah.
Um, both were PEs and I'm hoping to make a decision on that, uh, by May fifth. So, um, any questions for Andrew?
And when we, at our last meeting, we expanded the, um, salary parameters for you.
We're, we're.
Did we need to do, should we have needed to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
You're trying to reneg.
No, no, so.
Within range, we're, we're right on the spot, I believe.
Okay, so, once the two positions are filled, um, could we then, could you then provide us with a, um, suggested matrix where we can determine based on, uh, the different levels, what other people's salaries should be?
I want, I would like to do a, a, get a study done next fiscal year, um, on all of our positions within the district because.
Before budgeting.
It's gonna cost to do that study. Paychecks can do a limited, um, analogy. It's very, especially with our utility positions, it's very difficult to compare because what we have here wears three hats. Utility, water, sewer, irrigation and a typical job description that paychecks looks nationwide, that there's, it, it's not really comparable. Um, so that's where I'd like to hire, I mean, I can, we can ask them to do an assessment on them before budget.
Well, I would, I would like that to be one of the components when we're budgeting.
Okay.
Because it would appear based on what we did last time that numbers of salaries are going to have to increase. And we should know that going into our budgeting, not after we pass a budget.
Yes.
What, what about going to somebody like Joe Di Cerbo and some of the other organizations we belong to here in Florida that are, uh, CDDs that have like facilities to us, which are, they're not a lot. There's probably maybe a dozen. Go to them and pick their brain as to what the, the prices are. We've learned one thing and we learned it the hard way. We were told right off the bat that the prices that we had going in six months ago, we were on the low side. We were told that then, so it shouldn't be any shock to anybody. I think when we go forward, it's not, it's not gonna get any better.
I agree.
And what it's going to, uh, uh, create the need for is to go back and look at the whole picture, which I think is what you're saying.
Yes.
Let's, let's take this that we started and go to, uh, the CDD organization and say, hey, what communities do you have that have water, sewer and irrigation that have, uh, ten, fifteen thousand population that we can talk to and get pricing?
We, we will do our best to work on that.
I just think it should be a part of our budgeting this year, not come afterwards.
Some of these firms that do this kind of work on pricing, they, they don't understand us, a CDD, they don't understand how we operate. It's totally different, uh, than, uh, out in private practice.
Understood.
So if somebody's got a guy that's like our guy that does water, sewer, whatever, that would be a good comparison.
And so we're still accepting application for, for utilities director. We've re-upped our, our thing on AWWA for promoting that. Um, and just a couple other items here from the admin report. Learned some new information from, um, talking with Flavia about the sheriff's office. Um, we're going next, hopefully next month, you'll see, you'll see this is the sheriff's report and it's very spotty. Um, we've provided them a template to provide a report on, um, anytime that they do any duties, within Gateway. And then, um, I believe that's pretty much it for the admin report. We have financials, um, through the end of March. Laura has been buried in getting our new accounting system up, um, and running by May first and that is still her, her goal. Um, so these next two weeks, they're doing lots and lots of training and final touches before we convert to, to this, the accounting system. But, um, is there any questions for the admin report?
I, 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 I have just two things, so the insurance claim.
Yes.
Um, I just wanna make sure that, because it was my understanding that we were not filing an insurance claim because we didn't have enough damage, which I thought it was, you know, I thought absolutely not. So then we are filing insurance claims, so I just wanna make sure that the board was aware that we are filing.
We, we weren't filing, correct, we're filing, we're not filing FEMA, we're filing our insurance. Which FEMA would reset, would say to us, if you have insurance, you have to go to them first.
Which is fine, so then what I had asked is, because I started really digging into the financials because I had some. Which is fine. So then what I had asked is because I started really digging into the financials because I had some concerns, which. Hopefully with the next few weeks, I'll get the answer from Laura. The overage, it had to do with monies that were spent because we're waiting on insurance. So I wanted to get this insurance list to try to see. Have we spent two hundred thousand, fifty thousand? So I so Laura was actually able to send me a spreadsheet. I am concerned from the description of the items and the total amount. Under between seventy seven to ninety thousand dollars of damages in all assets of Gateway to the hurricane. I I I don't think that's accurate. I think I think we're missing a lot of items. I can see that Pelican was way more detail. And the cost, I mean Stony Brook, two, you know, two, two items, that's it. I I think there were more than that. But I I just want to make sure that staff, you know, below Laura, so utility and and public works and Parks and Rec. That they were giving, you know, clear instructions. You gotta go out there and you're gonna assess everything that was damaged by the insurance and you gotta give us a list. Because I do not believe that this reflects what the time we have spent, money we have spent. And the true damages, because up to today, we're still finding damages on the weers and fences, things that we weren't able to, you know, visit yet.
What's the dollar value?
The total.
Of this one here.
Three hundred and fifty four thousand dollars and from that, two hundred and eight, two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars is Pelican Preserve and seventy seven thousand dollars is Gateway.
So we will be doing a final call for. We we will be doing a final call for claims. I asked Laura to send out that email to everybody. The the wells was a perfect example, the the irrigation wells up here at the fencing. We've been having a heck of a time getting just pricing for a fencing contractor to come out. So we finally got. The solid quotes and chose to move forward on that. So we're gonna do a final all call. We'll reach out to Pelican, reach out to Stony Brook. And all of the funds and make sure we we've.
Does this include all the costs associated with the the road restoration and the tree removal and all of that? Gateway Boulevard is blocked by trees. Who who paid for all that? Did we pay for any of that or did county?
The county did that as part of the.
That was a part of our expense.
We had we had some landscaping that we paid.
We've street signs.
Yeah, I'm still waiting on Likens to provide a final proposal for the those repairs. So it's, we'll do a final call probably tomorrow and then collect everything by next Wednesday. I did get back answer back from the insurance guy. He's had the paperwork for over a month, if not longer. He said he would get an answer back to us by the end of next week and that we would have a have a call and go over everything.
What's our deductible?
Oh, I'm I'd have to ask Laura.
Yeah, we like here as an example, remove the damaged lights and fixtures on soccer field, two thousand dollars. Is that really our total cost for getting those lights back? I don't think so. So even if we don't have a cost, but at least of the damaged items. I asked I asked Laura, I asked, I know, I just got it to like right before the meeting I was at the office. I wanted it because I'm trying to. Okay, generally, this is gonna be a very generous.
You don't want to be a little bitter on this.
That generous statement, when I started going out there and looking at items for maintenance and repair and just day to day. There was definitely an opportunity in a lot of areas. So I wanted to find out why is that an opportunity? Is it that we didn't have the money? Is it because we didn't have the staff? What is it? So I went to the financials first. And to my surprise, a lot of the items, the money was spent. But to me, does not reflect out there when you're looking at items. So then I reached out to Laura and Chelsea and they said, well, a lot of the stuff that you see on on the the numbers. It's because it has items that were insurance claims or 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 were made and we're waiting for the money. Okay, I take that. However, if that's the case, the items are still should have been repaired. Didn't matter who paid. And that, so I asked Laura to give me, I gave her like one entire Parks and Recs, actually. I wanted all the invoices for Parks and Recs because I want to see if they some and if they're coded correctly. So looking at that and trying to remove the insurance total from it. It's just either it's we're missing items on this list. Or something is not quite coded correctly on the financials. I don't know what it is until I get everything. But I do definitely think there's an opportunity, which I I'm glad that she took it in, which is telling staff, go out there. Make sure everything that was hurricane damage is noted, so we can do a supplemental with insurance. We let them know. I just think seventy seven thousand dollars worth of damage for the entire gateway, it's not.
Well, like I said, we have, we're still missing the sign quote from Likens. And I I mean, that's one I know for sure. And then we just had seven thousand dollars added today with the fence quotes that we got.
Yeah, but then I guess to me, even if you don't have a, so if we can get, if we can send this to the whole board, this. With additional items that were damaged, it just doesn't have a dollar amount, so they they are aware of it.
I'll send it next week after we do our.
That's fine, just so they they know what they're looking at. And and then for Pelican, because he does have the Pelican items. And Carol and and Bob may say, hey, I see that we did a claim for those things, but I noticed this item and this item is damaged and it's not here. We need to do a supplemental. Does that make sense, Bob?
Anything else for the admin before? Next one is the Public Works Department. And you can't grill Andrew because he has. Read it, so I'll do my best to answer. Noted of the comments earlier about the the reports from the vendor for the ponds and. Landscape. Is there any questions for the Public Works? Andrew's gonna be so excited next month to present this to you all. You'll notice in there, there was a lot of irrigation. We had a big meeting with Mainscape and we just had a follow up meeting. They had, they did a lot of repairs. Staff is going to start working on the draft for, we want to do a.
Repairs of the irrigation system?
Yes, sir.
But the service.
Yes, sir, yes.
Included on the contract. We just wanted to know how much are the time? Because they're telling us the reason why stuff is not getting done is because they're repairing stuff that's under the contract. So we said, okay, show us what you're doing.
So staff is working on the a design bid build for the for the the system replacement, the irrigation. The controllers, yes, thank you. It's my understanding that there were a couple designs done four or five years ago, so instead of reinvent reinventing the wheel and starting from scratch. We're gonna reach out back out to who did that design.
Yeah, who did who who did the design? I thought it was all done Mainscape.
No, there was.
West Palm Beach, remember?
It was a, there was a landscape architect.
I I have the documents, but I think it was in two thousand. There was one.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna start on that. The funding is there, it's available. It's just a matter of. We have, we have to bid this out. We're gonna do design bid build and we'll we'll move along. So any questions about the Public Works on the report?
And you're going to make sure, because on that meeting, that we're going to include Griffin.
For.
For the design, for the irrigation.
That's gonna require mains, I believe. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Let me follow up. Are there are there irrigation mains down Griffin? I would assume so with the neighborhoods. Yes, yes, it would be.
And then Mainscape mentioned another area, I don't recall now, to make sure it's included on that.
All right, utilities.
Okay, let's jump one more thing. I want a clarification for Jim on the trees. So. The tree, the tree replacement planting program. And I told him I was gonna come to the board and get clarification. So he was under an impression that we take one tree, we plant one tree right there. We take one tree here, we're gonna go ahead and plant one tree there. And I said, uh.
Well, let me let me clarify because that direction was given by me. And it was, it the impetus behind that was because it was my understanding before when the previous roundabout and other things occurred. That when oak trees and sables and landscaping, the trees specifically, were removed as part of that construction project. The community was upset. And so what I advised Jim to do is find out, get the count of what was removed and is there another. Smart area within Gateway that would be a common benefit to the greater Gateway that we could plant. Those trees as a one for one. So I've asked him to identify some locations. And we could bring that back to the board.
You're referring to the trees that are just have been removed as a result of the construction project?
Yes, sir. Root balls are probably.
Just so that's clear, we we as a board said to the residents, yes, we'll try our best. We set this money aside. Does it mean that everyone one is gonna replace? No. Does it mean that everyone's gonna be replacing the same location? No, but if there is. A need that they have it, even if it was not replaced, hey, we can put some trees here, we'll do it. But it is not, you know, when I'm told I'm taking eleven sables and I'm planting eleven sables, I'm like, that is not what we said. So I ju, you know, so just if you can just get back to him with that, that's it.
So well, let let me be clear, is is the board, would you like for us to try to find an alternative location for the trees that were removed down there?
I'd want to look at it because I don't want to do this again and have. Trees put in a position that also we're gonna do is tear up more utilities again.
So we will.
I almost wish, this is something that I absolutely wish that the once the residents are like, this is their choice. The residents are upset and they're gonna come in and I want nothing more to say, we have the money, where do you want the tree? And then they tell us we're doing the tree. There's like nothing impedes it. It's not gonna be a problem. That's where the tree is gonna go. Because it solves this, that's what they wanted it. They want so. Let them, so for this. And then I want the tree there. There's no utilities, no issues. Okay, then.
Okay, so staff will not take any action on the site.
Where the where the jungle drugs are beating on the street right now. If we had put in stoplights, we wouldn't have had to do this. Well, that's not the case. More trees for the stoplights to be able to have sight distance. People don't get that.
Okay, as an aside, the Parks, Flavia had a really good idea. The Parks and Rec Advisory Committee members. Were asked via email to go do an inspection of all the parks and rec amenities. It didn't dawn on me, but it did on Flavia that you have to have a key card to get in some of these locations. So most of the PRAC members had a key access, the the FOB. We've we've given access to the dog park and to the pool if they did not already have it. So I just wanted you to be aware that we we've done that for those PRAC members. If and when they step down from the board, their card would be deactivated. And then, all right, jumping to utilities. Any questions? Okay.
Cam, Tony, can we say anything about the. Better that less they sent out? That 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 that's appropriated of what's going on with the computer system.
The one she sent to the litigation team?
I'm sorry.
Email she sent out to the litigation team?
Yeah, about the status of our.
I would say.
No, okay.
Well, we can have one on one conversation.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We'll have one on one conversation.
All right, that's all for the admin. Now we go to District Council.
You're up.
Okay. Just going through, still working through number of the district, the deeds, double checking them. And again, I have a list. To give to Charles Mann to finalize those with affidavits and requisite kind of work. The I have a written opinion and a restrictive covenants I have in a draft form, just need to finalize that, give it to Chelsea. For her file, that says to the comments property. On the notice of special assessment, typically after a bond issue and you do the special assessments, there's a notice reporting the public records. I have a draft and I'll be distributing that to the finance team next week. On the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee that's completed, hotwire damage claim, we're we have a letter draft you're gonna send out. Just need to run it by Chelsea. Do you request voluntary mediation, see what happens on hotwires? But their typical subsurface contractors are. Are never responsive to these kind of requests, especially when items occurred. We make a claim two years after the fact and they want to know where's your proof. So it's it's difficult because it's all subsurface. The Pelican Reserve District Infrastructure Easement Ownership Identification, we had a good meeting with Bob and Laura and Chelsea. Chelsea the other day, so my goal was for next week to twenty eight, to have all that wrapped up and identify the areas that are definitely the districts. And then we just need to say, what do we need from the other folks if necessary, like the golf course, Avia and and other developments.
So this will be the final Tony memo.
That's what, yeah, with the memo, explaining some things. And it's a Tetra Tech is edited by Tony.
This this is, we know what Ameriscape is currently doing. And now we understand the areas that are GSCDD assets. That they're properly doing. And the result of this last meeting is now we have a subset of items and beneficiaries. That are not part of GSCDD, but we're doing it for them. And those are the ones that we will move forward on with either a grant of easement or a license agreement.
Correct. And if a property owner doesn't want to give a grant of easement or license agreement, then there'll be a transition period saying.
But they certain in the future, we will stop. You do it if you want to do it or don't.
It's it's not gonna be, the recommendation will not be to the board to suddenly put on the brakes. It'll be a transition to allow the property owner who doesn't give us a license.
Once we have understanding of this, we're gonna share it, of course, with BBCA. So they see what's going on, how we're doing it, and then whoever's.
Of course, with PPAC too.
It's a PPAC driven. Yes.
Yeah, because one of the issues that always comes up when you try to get a grant of easement is if there's a mortgage on the property, say the golf course. And then you have to go to the lender and get their sign off. Lenders are not easy to deal with. So a license agreement is not an instrument that is recorded and it can be terminated any time. But it provides the ability for the district to engage in its activities. On the on Timber Ridge, Chelsea provided my memo to the Timber Ridge folks. They're not really happy about the extent. The question was on Griffin Drive, where's the demarcation line for the district's landscape maintenance to end where Timber Ridge has to pick it up? And I went to looked at the Platts, looked at the development orders from Lee County, provided a memorandum with the attachments to Chelsea. She gave that to the Timber Ridge. Representatives and they wrote back, basically they're not really happy, but.
There's the tree line there's.
All of it.
It's it's sort of very.
When you drive home, you can see the right of way stakes. Most of the time, like eighty percent of the time, it's at the toe of the burn, at the bottom where their bulge bed starts.
Full of slope.
Yep, every now and then it pops up, but generally, it's it's them.
Yeah, I say ninety percent of the tree. My eyeball here going along, it's like ninety percent of the trees.
Huge reduction in the tree trimming because the amount of palm trees that are there that we're trimming.
Have we been maintaining them?
Yes.
I say when ninety percent Chelsea, the trees are.
Yes.
Outside the right of way. So the Pelican Reserve, I'll just do the memo to the file on that about revisiting it. The preparing, reviewing, oh, the interlocal agreement with Lee County, did a major rewrite with Chelsea of that.
From scratch. Should have just read it from scratch.
Absolutely right. Would have been a two pager. But then the by the time we modify and deleted the non-relevant material, it was about three page. But and school board has come back with further edits. I mean, we made edits and now they, the latest was the nineteenth, I think, yesterday they came back with more.
We're close.
A few questions.
We're really close.
So I think we it'll be in a position to be on the May fourth agenda. I think that's the goal.
And and in the end. I think that's fair. And in the interim, Mainscape has started maintaining and mowing that area just because it is. In poor condition.
The 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 roundabout is the worst.
Yeah, and part of the misunderstanding on the part of the school board is that the road and a portion of the entrance to the school is owned by Lee County. So the work is going to be done on Lee County property and not touch school board property. That's.
That was the problem with when I'm like, this half is not done. They're like, okay, this one is Lee County. This half's not done. They're called a principal. I'm like.
So that's where, and we even had the graphics and LIPA to say, here's, so now they want us to do the graphics. I think that's. So we're going to be doing that to move that to move that along. Board policies and procedures. Had some initial comments on the beginning with Chelsea on that, so we can wrap that up and bring that to the board. Archive documents ongoing, North Haven's the middle, that's completed a while back. On Daniel's Parkway Apartments, I had a conversation with the engineer, Dave Underhill, for that project. So that he could understand what the district's needs were with regards to some aspects. And also North Haven, the same thing with regards to easements that were needed. The Stony Brook Roads and Streets, I'll do a follow up email to the county tomorrow about doing a follow up meeting.
Where does that stand? We need to, this this is dragging on way too long.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, hey, we need to, you know.
Let's switch it up right now.
When can we, I'm gonna ask, when can we schedule the next meeting? They want us to provide indications around the state of Florida, other CEDs in a comparable situation. I've not found that yet. got an amount of research.
Where's this coming from?
From the county attorney's office and county lands.
That's hard to see. So this is not what he wanted.
But we'll still, we'll still follow up with a meeting, say, hey, let's have a follow-up meeting, because they also indicated they wanted time to reflect on other issues.
He did not want to spend a lot of money on legal fees accomplishing what appears to be something very, very, very simple. And if it's his staff that's causing it, I'll let him know that. So it sounds like we aren't making it up, so it must be his staff.
Well, I, I would suggest again, wait to see about when we can have another meeting and then report back in the May fourth meeting. How's that?
Well, some of the issues that are going on up at Stony Brook, we need to get those roads to them quickly.
I understand. So again, I, I, I have not yet found other CEDs in a comparable situation and I will keep looking and asking, making inquiries.
Could we simultaneously, because I did talk to this with Chelsea and because I know you have a relationship with CISO and then a lot of the information you got it from him and, and if we need to give feedback of the staff, maybe just have a meeting just with CISO, Chelsea and Ed. I thought, you know, you could do your, your side and I, I, I had asked Chelsea to reach out to Ed and, and maybe you set up a meeting, you know, the three of you and then find out like what are the delays are, um, if you're up to it.
Well, again, I think.
My, my, my deal is, was something that's so simple, what, 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 what if somebody else is doing it? Has it, what's that got to do with anything?
So then.
What, why, why do they want to worry about that? That makes no sense to me. It has nothing to do with us whatsoever. If we're the first ones to do it, so what?
Yeah.
Tell me what is wrong with it, because CISO is saying there is nothing wrong with it. Just go do it. Transfer the paperwork and be done with it.
Yeah, well, from the, from the staff perspective, there are issues about the condition of the roads and, you know, all those.
You have to find your job.
Well, all, I think it's similar to what happened when the, I'm, I'm not being an apologist for them, just similar to what happened on the turnover of Gateway Boulevard in Griffin, where they wanted to have an indication of what's out there now before they made a decision as to what they would take over.
That, that's, that's apples and oranges. They were taking it over. They're passing this through. It has nothing to do with them. They're gonna own it for thirty seconds.
Well, that's, that's what Chelsea said. Chelsea's like, it didn't matter, what they were saying is it doesn't matter if we own it for a, an hour. What, what if it, we own it? What if something happened with the, the thirty seconds within an hour? That's, that's what the position that they're taking.
What if Biden gets reelected? We, we got all kinds of worries around here.
So there has been a lot of emails, um, coming from the Stony Brook, by Stony Brook Committee. Um, and it seems like they may have some interest that's stirring up to take over these roads. I haven't gotten anything in writing per se that that's their desire.
But the problem is, they really don't have anything to do with the process to be, make it happen.
Although the staff indicated they, from the county commission's perspective, this is my recollection, Chelsea, correct me if I'm wrong, is they want the community support behind that concept about this community.
Some, some type of indication in writing.
Strong indication.
Well, it's real easy. We just go to who's their governing board, their HOA, get a letter from them. We'd be glad to have those facilities.
I have asked for that letter and I have yet to receive it to date.
Who, who's, who's the one who would initiate the letter?
Joe McCoglan will be.
I had previously asked their chair, which was Chris Capiello.
Who's the president?
It's Joe, Joe McCollough is now.
Now the president.
Now the president, so.
And that's one of the items they wanted.
Yeah.
I forgot to mention that. Uh, I'll add the streetlights and gateway greens, uh, the Prado five-five-eight. And interesting, the engineer on that was Tyler with another company, Tyler Wainwright. I just noticed that. These change companies? Uh, this is a twenty-twenty five inspection report for Prado with a company called, uh, and I just noticed this, J and Z Industries LLC, Tyler Wainwright PE.
Tyler Stone with Tetra Tech?
I don't know how many Tyler Wainwrights there are.
Yeah, be more than lights.
Pardon? Oh, is this, oh, is this a separate company? Okay.
I didn't hear that. He does what?
The moonlight.
Moonlight. With another company?
Yeah, JZ, no, something.
J and Z Industries LLC. He has a side business.
Things have changed since I got out of that business. You couldn't do that. No way.
I'm not gonna go into the engineer.
No way.
Uh, just, this is just a, an update and without talking into the facts of it. There's a notice of bid protest was filed today. I'll get with Chelsea on that about repairing a response.
Bid protests on what?
On the basin for uh inspection and repair.
What's, what's the issue?
I can't.
We didn't take the.
Can't get into the detail of it. It was, uh, we, I can send you, again, right now it's in. Right now the process is, the notice of bid protest was filed. It went to Chelsea, copy to me. Chelsea has the um obligation to render a decision within ten business days in consultation, working with our office. And then if the person does not like the decision, that person within two calendar days can request file objections and ask the board hearing. But until that point in time, it's at the staff level of the bid protest process. Lastly, I think we'll be coming to you, I'll be talking to Chelsea about some proposed rule amendments to request some rule development authority in next board meeting. I'll talk to you on Monday about that in a weekly.
And we're still working on the FGUA interconnect.
Yeah, on that, yes, the FGUA interconnect, I forgot to mention, it's on my list here. Uh, we made, I think substantial headway on the wholesale potable water agreement, but the interconnect agreement still, well, in state of flux depending upon what the parameters are. The gallonage, the, the connection, the service area, all those items. And then Chelsea's had contact with Lee County very closely with it. Like I said, Lee County is a member of that FGUA.
Right. Anything else for Tony? Alright, moving along. This is a little outdated. Um, we, we had to push some things off, but um, for the most part, you'll see what's, we, we do have a scheduled workshop, which I intend on it being a budget workshop. Um, more so of big picture, ten thousand foot, um, looking to you all for initiatives for next fiscal year, um, similar to what we've done with Stony Brook, with Pelican, with all of their subcommittees. Um, kind of asking what, what they would like to see done next fiscal year. Um, so we do have a workshop on May fourth. Um, so we'll set a reminder out to you all.
That can start.
Uh, two o'clock.
Is it three?
Two to three, and then the normal meeting starts at three.
Will that be one hour? I, 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 I don't think one hour is.
Will that be sufficient time?
You. I don't intend on going deep into the budget because we just ten thousand, thirty thousand.
Enough to pressurize. They're above the ten thousand.
I think that's good to get us started. We just got the budget worksheets like yesterday or the day before. So we're going in depth into those sheets. Um, there's definitely some changes I'd like to see for next year for detailed components of the budget, but this is more of a big picture conversation, like to have with the board on the direction that you'd like to, if there's any, I'll call them quote-unquote pet projects or things that you'd like to see um, for staff to work on next fiscal year.
I just, because I know you're sensitive to you not being here, with the majority of the time, the majority of the input will like to take it from Carol when you're here, which is because May fourth is the last meeting they can get with the ten, right? And then.
Oh, no, no.
Aren't you going on vacation?
The month of August.
Okay.
So I'll be here.
For the high water mark.
All of May, all of June, all of your life.
Okay, perfect. So is two o'clock good with the board for the workshop? Okay.
Can I double back? Because I think I'm, you mentioned the golf cart policy for Pelican Reserve. Did you cover that? Did I just?
I thought it was.
Lays over.
It was in the report.
Yeah, I think PPA reported.
It went to PPA and then, uh, I, did they, did they weigh in on that?
Yes.
Yep.
That's all done? Okay.
Well, I believe if there was a resolution associated with that, then it'll have to come back in front of this board for amendment. So.
I think was the approach, but I, I wasn't there. I think it was that to repeal the prior resolution, get the district out of it, have the restriping of the lanes and assuming that everything is approved by the district engineer for compliance with the MTCD.
Yeah.
And remove the four foot.
And there was a task authorization asked of Tetra Tech to make sure for that compliance effort. So we're, and then that will go back to PPA.
The ball's in PPA's court, right?
The ball is in Tony's court for the um, resolution.
Yeah, and I think, uh, I think it might be better to have. Question is whether or not the resolution repeal everything before you get the, engage in the activity to restripe it. That might be the appropriate.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up, because I don't think we have an agreement necessarily at PPA. I know we don't with the community association of whether we can just say we're out of it and that's kind of why I'm talking about it. Is what I think I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the district doesn't have an ore in the water relative to golf carts as long as the operators of the golf carts are not in violation of Florida law statutes.
The district has the ability to have certain rules and regulations, but not get into like the aesthetics and all those items. But the district doesn't have to have that program in place. The program could be, and I think that was the, the thought process was that the district repeal the prior resolution about registration and operation and leave that to the state statutory scheme and leave it to law enforcement. Or if the Property Owners Association, Master Association, PPCA wishes to treat violations of golf cart regulations or state statutes as a violation of their covenants. Some communities do that. Fiddler's Creek, for example, the master association there, the, uh, Fiddler's Creek Foundation. If they notice a traffic quote-unquote violation by a resident, they will then send a letter, but that's not the district.
Okay, I'm just trying to zero in on what we as a district are telling, giving PPA as an option.
Okay.
To.
I thought
Okay.
that at the last PPA meeting, they said that they were going to get, they agreed with the wording from GSCDD staff that they should get, that the district should get out of the golf cart business. And that they were going to restripe the streets and that the four foot on the right side was for bikes only and golf carts would have, would not have their own lane, would be a motorized vehicle that would have the other two lanes. They would just have to run in those.
I agree with everything you said, but I wasn't sure that I got the PPA adopted.
Okay.
Oh, you want to hear?
Phil wasn't there.
I think it was everything except the last, the last sentence.
Yes.
Right?
Exactly. Bill Serico for PPCA.
Everything's there, except the last sentence that says, I, I, at a time from time, the PPA or Pelican Reserve may come up with rules and then we'll force them, they did not want that, we remove that and everything.
Clearly, the, the, the resolution provided by staff was adopted with the exception of that, exactly that last sentence.
We don't want to tell PPCA what to do. That's what it was.
Well, it's, it isn't that PPCA doesn't want to be in the business. I mean, if you guys want to drop the registration requirements, I mean, we'll just stop enforcing it.
They weren't doing that for us, I don't believe.
Yeah, sure you were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that it was being done, but it was being done by PP's.
CA under the, under the, under the O immigrant. I mean, if you don't want us to do it anywhere, we won't do it.
And that's, that's the whole point of repealing that resolution because that resolution is what adopted that, those.
The requirement.
Okay, that's a little link I missed.
Okay. Yeah, so.
Which, which, by the way, i- i- is impossible for us to enforce. I mean, we got maybe thirty, forty percent compliance with the registration requirements.
Was that registration?
For the insurance.
Yeah.
To get insurance.
Show you how to do it. We did two hundred and thirty carts registered. Nobody's driving around anymore. Hundred dollars violation every time you do it. Well, okay, so the, the, there's sort of, there's sort of the conundrum we've always faced. The rules are the district rules.
Right.
We really don't have the authority to enforcement under our covenants. So we were. Yeah, exactly.
You're a middleman. Now that we are out of it, now the PPCA can, if they still choose.
I, I don't know. Frankly, it's never been.
Because that's exactly the sentence that you removed. That is exactly this.
Took it out of the district.
They can choose to do it.
They're all, yeah.
The answer is Bob, at this point, I think the sense of the board is we don't want to be in this business either.
Okay.
The traffic law covers it. Leave it alone.
Okay, yeah. Alright, and I'm okay with that. I mean, as long as, I just didn't, I want, I was unclear and I wanted to make sure that I knew where Tony was coming from. And the.
We are gonna get sued.
We're gonna get sued. That didn't make sense.
So Tony will be repealing, bringing back.
Bring back to make forth a resolution repealing in its entirety, existing resolution, uh, involving golf carts.
Yep.
Now it's just being individuals and the state of Florida laws.
Yep.
Yeah, and one other note, I was reading some legislation that's working its way through. It may raise the age to sixteen.
Fourteens, wait.
They may raise the pay, they may raise it to sixteen.
You answered my question. Thank you.
Alright, so.
I'd take a ton of them out of Gateway or Gateway Greens. You, you haven't got anybody that young over there in your place, do you?
No.
Kids come in.
So is there, the agenda management, is there anything, some of these items are going to be pushed off Arborwood Phase Three Utilities. They've got a lot of work to do left. Um, we do have a change order for the, the roundabout. Um, it's, it's like six thousand dollars. Um, I can sign it.
What for?
Connections for Denny Grimes.
Connection for Denny Grimes.
The service lines for Denny Grimes.
You mean for the building he's in?
Yeah.
Does it be moving?
No, no, no.
Sanitary sewer connection?
Water and I think it's water and air, there are two service lines. I'm not a hundred percent sure. They were missed on the original plan set. And so we have to do a change order to have those. And then there, there's some other things like a hyd- we have some hydrant things and we're gonna shift some things, but it comes back to six thousand dollars. I have the authority to sign off on it, but I just wanted you all to be aware since that would adjust the contract price. Um, we, like Stephen said earlier, the lower Hawthorne well construction, hopefully that'll come in Monday. We can get that to you guys sooner than later. Um, we're gearing up for budget. As you can see, you'll see all of the budget, budget items here. Um, is there anything else that you'd like for us to be working on? Let me keep scrolling.
You don't think that's enough?
Hi. Please, have mercy.
Best thing is get some people in here.
Yeah, that's, that's my goal. So, um, with any, with that, I don't have anything else for agenda management.
People that's on us, is that where we're going?
Yep.
Yes.
Go ahead, Cam.
Yes. Um, I believe Laura sent everybody, um, the evaluation instrument that the district uses for its employees. And, uh, we have, um, I believe Chelsea's evaluation. You'll be here a year when?
May seventeenth.
Ah, okay. So I believe that sometime in May, we should, we as a board should do her evaluation. And I was wondering, how, how have you done it in the past? Because I haven't been here. This would be my first time. I don't know.
Not first, but most.
So I didn't know we'd done one of them.
So, so I had that as a question.
Oh, okay.
Um, I have reviewed the previous district manager. Um, I don't know if it was ever delivered. Let's put it that way, but I, I have, I have reviewed the forms that were completed. So one of the options would be, because if it's gonna be all of us at the same time, it has to be here at a meeting, right?
Um, well, no, you could do it and you could do it yourself and send it to, so I don't know, Tony or Laura.
Well, so this, so the one person will be the delivering person, but I, I was thinking a good idea is to you complete the form as if you were delivering. I would do mine, Ed does his, Bob does his and either, and Doug, and then, and we're either, I wouldn't necessarily want to compile, but actually bring all of them. And then one person will deliver all and come up with, you know, either the action plan that needs to be come up or uh, things like that. And then also Chelsea will be doing her, so.
So we would send it to Tony. Tony would then.
Include it in the agenda packet. What I, one way I've seen it is the.
Therefore, that maybe.
Well, each, each board member does it and then it's compiled as one agenda item where everything, just all of the evaluations are one after the other. And then the board collectively will discuss the evaluations and then uh, have a determination as to how to proceed.
So I, I have a comment for how I've seen it done in the past at Fort Myers Beach is, um, the town manager would meet individually and discuss their review with each of the board members. And then they would come back at a regularly scheduled board meeting and discuss as, as a collective body. Um, I don't know if there were papers, review paper forms that were actually filled out. I know the job description was given, but um, I personally would like, regardless of how you choose to move forward, to sit with each of you individually and, and, and get your input um, over the next, you know, month or so and, and see, you know, from your perspective. Each of you have very unique different backgrounds and different perspectives. Um, and I'd like to, that's the feedback I would like. Um, but and of course, any decision that you make would have to be in front of, uh, uh, as a collective body. I'm open whatever you wish to do.
That process works also.
What's, so what's our timeline in getting these documents back to, say, Tony?
Well, if, if the, if it goes, the anniversary is May seventeenth. Well, if, if the, if it goes, the anniversary is May seventeenth. Right, that's the anniversary date. They have a meeting on the eighteenth. So you would need them in the agenda package by May tenth. Already May eleventh.
Well, what is, what is the second meeting in?
Uh, May eighteenth.
Yes.
Oh, or June, or June thirtieth.
So we, we could have that as an, could we have a, a meet, uh. Could we move the time up so we would have, wouldn't be able, wouldn't have to crowd the regular agenda?
We have another meeting date earlier than the eighteenth or?
No, no, no.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, start the meeting at two o'clock instead of three.
Right, we, we just send a new note. It's not that expensive.
Yeah, okay.
So that's one way to do.
Okay, what is the foundational starting point? Is there a document?
Yeah, so we were sent that. Yes, we, 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 no, we already have that. We have the document.
Laura emailed it to you?
Oh, if she emailed it, didn't put my home address, I don't know about.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, she probably just did.
So there was my, there was my, my offer letter and then my job description was, was attached as well as. The review document that is used by staff or.
Okay.
And then are you completing your own?
I already have.
Okay, so perfect. So then, then each of us can take a look at the document right now. And as we're completing them, just start sending it to Tony.
Yeah, and, and have your one on ones with Chelsea in between. If that's where out the board wants to go.
And tell us a date. We should have it to you. We should email it to you by what date?
By, to have it on the eighteenth agenda. It, I should have it by the ninth so that I could do a little cover memo. I'm not making any recommendations. It's board action. Then I would send it to Chelsea to include the agenda.
One day, you, you, because they have to have.
No, let's, let's shoot for the first.
Because they have, they, they needed to have it by the ten so that if we send it to you on the ninth, you only have one day to.
I, I, all I'm gonna do is just to recover them.
Okay.
Because I'm not gonna make, I'm not my role.
I'm, that's whatever you, you all choose. I'm not gonna force you all to meet with me, but just if you would like to, I, I would be. I would, I would like that. Um, but if you don't feel the need to, that's fine by me as well.
And Chelsea will help me walk through my granite, granite is uploading techniques. So I can load it within five. I'm getting better, I'm certain.
Send it to Georgia. That's what everybody knows.
I couldn't find it. I know, I'm sorry.
Either that or send it to Laura, send it back to Laura and she'll get it to Tony.
Okay, anything else, Karen?
Okay, so I am to use what Laura sent out. I am to get it to Tony by. Uh, May ninth. And, uh, then we'll have it for the meeting on the eighteenth.
Yes.
Got it.
So would.
From Laura, not George.
Yes. So would you like my review sent to you prior myself?
If you have it ready, just send it to us now.
Okay, I will, I will distribute that.
Self review as well. Yeah, so if you tell her you're ready, just send it.
Okay.
And Chelsea, did you use that same format?
I did.
Okay, so then we had the consistency of across the board.
That's all I.
Yeah, beat it.
Ed?
Nothing.
Bob?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple of things. I've been in contact with, uh, Heritage Golf Club to try and get a copy of their, uh, survey that they did. When they purchased the golf club from Pelican Reserve. And I have to say, I haven't very, very much, very much progressed, but at least the local people. So I finally sent a letter off to their corporate staff in, uh, I don't remember what state it was in.
Virginia.
Trying to get, was it Virginia? Yeah, uh, for, for staff, for Smith or something. Anyway, so I sent it off to them. I haven't got a reply back. Uh, but we're trying to use this in conjunction with the work that Tony's doing. Appeals and granted license and all that stuff. So just a matter of information for you. I also attended the meeting this week with, uh. Our city council person from Pelican Reserve that's part of, uh, Fort Myers City Council, the Residents Alliance. And, uh, Chelsea was over there and the Pelican Reserve Community Association. The thrust of the meeting was. Like very, very preliminary and exploratory point of view. Could we move our water source away from the city of Fort Myers, potable and surge? And move it over to the district and what would that, what would that accomplish if we could do it? So it's in a very preliminary stage.
The entire non-Gateway portion.
Yes, yes.
But we can serve within and without the district.
Anyway, we're, we're just, we're not gonna debate it to answer right now. Just make you aware that there's an initiative, at least look.
Hundred thousand foot level.
Yeah, because, you know, Chris, it is, the district agreed to allow the city of Fort Myers to service. Particularly.
Understanding all of that.
Yeah, way back when when the district didn't have lines going there, but yeah.
But there's interest in doing it because of the water pressure issues, the quality and all of it.
All of the growth that is coming along also that will only, may only exacerbate Pelican's problems.
That's not, that's not part of this discussion. That's what's driving us. I totally agree. Now, if you'd tried to do this two years ago, they'd have thrown you out of town because of the problems we have with district work. But we've reversed that now. So anyway, it's just going on just so that you're aware if you hear anything about it. And let's see, lastly. Oh, just as a reminder that we, we, someone is gonna be putting signs on the pods over here. Was that an assignment we gave out? In this meeting that our pods would be covered?
I, my, did I step out? I did not hear that.
Did we say, did we wanted to do that?
I think, no, no, I think it was on the map. I think it was on, when we're putting out maps or, uh, I'm sorry. When we're putting out messages for, oh, pond seventy, pond sixty, they have no idea. So include a map. That in its map has all the numbers so people can like, okay, seventy.
And I would like to go a step further. I mean, it's not that big a deal to make these little signs. At least they're very effective in Pelican. People know where they live. They know their pond number. And it's a simple thing. I think it would, would help the community understand where they live. So if that wasn't a resolution, I won't make it now, but I'll save it for the next meeting.
No one at Gateway Greens knows what pond they're on.
A budget initiative. That's what that sounds like.
Oh, it's, you can do the whole thing for less than five days. Not that big a deal. We did it. We did it. And, and I know how much we spent.
You need to tell me where you find the posts from, because I'm going there.
Landscape work group did, I mean, the pods work group did it. They got posts and signs and all that. That's all I got.
Sure, small time take theirs. Let's see what they got. They got what.
What number do you have, right?
One through fifty-eight. We'll just go take theirs and have it cover at least one through fifty-eight of ours.
All of your numbers are different. I, I knew you'd try to pull it.
All right, so I just have two items that I want us, the board to, um, kind of revisit and be able to give Chelsea some clarification. So I just wanted to put it for the end because in case we touched it. So one, it's regarding, uh, Lee County Sheriff's Office. And I'm gonna rely on Ed on this for Lee County Sheriff's Office. So our current, currently we're under contract with Lee County Sheriff's Office. For a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to do the detailing gateway. And, um, last year, I think we increased. Fifty thousand dollars because originally it was a hundred thousand dollars. Um, in previous years, uh, the detail included. Um, doing, um, show face, what I call it, drive by the communities. You know, they're just going to Gateway Greens. They're not. Intra, uh, uh, enforcing traffic. They're just showing face. So maybe if they're here today, they will go to Gateway Greens, they will go Eagle Point, they will go Stony Brook. They'll be here tomorrow, they'll hit Magana Lakes, they're just showing faces. That is not being done anymore. And I was surprised that that wasn't being done. I think.
Not being done and we're not paying.
No, we're paying for, we're paying for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that somehow it got dropped out of their. Here, this is every fire. Exactly. So we gave them more money and less responsibilities. Okay, so I asked Chelsea to send me the request for the detail because I wanted to know what are the specific. You know, instructions that were given to them. And then that's when we realized that the specific instructions that were given to them were tailored to the issues. They were having on that particular time and they were never amended. So they never stopped doing that. Uh, what I want, what I, my suggestion was with Chelsea, and I just want to make sure the board is clear is. We'll have them monitor all the, the, the parks and racks, the men, the soccer field, you know, the fun park and all that. And in addition to do traffic enforcement on Griffin and Gateway Boulevard.
Absolutely.
And show face in the communities. I think for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's like the bare minimum. Show face in the communities. It doesn't, you know, not gonna be able to hit every community the day that you're here. Uh, but just kind of leave it open to the, to, to the officer to go and do it. And I think that will work because we are requesting them to. Give us a better detailed report instead of, I was in Gateway today from twelve to three. That does not work for me. Just tell us where, you know.
But, but we both weren't aware that we could make them do a report that we provided.
Yes.
That, that was new information. So we, and since then, we provided a standard report.
Perfect.
That Jen Hillary is going to be implementing with all of the, the, the cops that patrol this area.
Yes.
So, but if it, if the intent is to not only patrol G S C D D property. Um, properties, parcel properties, if it's to patrol Gateway and Griffin and communities. Then we have to amend the scope with, with them. So.
What I hear from the people is the same thing over and over and, and control the speed on the two roads. That's, that's the big issue.
Security for the soccer field and the dog park and.
So, so then we, 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 we found a few hiccups and, and, and like. The soccer fields, the gates were not being locked. So, so if you lock it, then the detail may have to only check out once a night. Not sit in the parking lot the whole time. And that's what was happening. So that is not why we. The intent of the board that I recall, that's not why we gave them more money. Um, and also the amount of time that they're spending actually doing traffic enforcement in Gateway, when you actually read the report, it's very slim.
That's not acceptable.
So that's.
The whole idea is in that money is for traffic.
We needed to give them the direction. So I guess, so Chelsea, what I would ask is the direction to go to Lee County Sheriff's Office is. Take care of the, all the amenities.
And then focus their efforts.
Traffic enforcement on Gateway and Griffin. And then if they have time, they will go into the communities, not enforce traffic, but just show face.
Easily seventy-five to eighty percent traffic.
So do we want to, do we want to start with parceled properties and traffic detail? And then, then, or do, do you just want to add the face in the communities?
Tell them all. And we already told them their reporting. So we, we know they're not gonna be able to hit all the communities. So once they start giving us the reports, say, hey, I did. Traffic enforcement for two hours in Gateway Boulevard. I did one hour, because it's four hours.
It's four hours shift.
Yeah.
So I did one hour of checking all the facilities and I did one hour, I was able to do three communities. That's fine with me.
I'd rather see him do four hours of traffic and then the next time do the exposure in the community. Because you drive all these streets, you're, you're gonna blow for, Gateway Greens is thirteen miles of road.
Days a week do they come?
Uh, so it says that security detail is two times a, a week, evenings through overnights and traffic is one shift per week. Mornings.
This morning's when we have the problem or is it after?
All day, all twenty-four seven.
Well, the round is now being under constructions.
The people would rather see.
We had an accident yesterday, was it today?
Yesterday.
Yeah.
The people would rather see the exposure of the, of police at night than they would in the daytime.
Four day. Four day.
Yeah, maybe eve, early evening, uh, after sunset, somewhere around there. But the big thing is monitoring the traffic because the cars are flying.
It's a good start. At least we're starting. We get on fire as we go down. But let's at least do so.
Well, at least it was good that brought up that we are, you know, doing it.
Okay, great.
And then the second question, it comes regarding, you know, if it's, I'm always about, if it's costing us money, meaning the residents' money, then. I want to push it to be enforced. So, um, the damage on, on, on the landscaping on Gateway Boulevard. From the school traffic, the damage on between the Gateway Elementary and Bristol Park. And now the new damage that we've never had before on a cross street from Hampton Park entrance. So maybe one of those shifts or, or a few hours of those shifts for him to enforce.
Where are cars going off the road?
Yes.
Oh, as you said, watch for big rocks there.
Well, we get some sable palms there, some oak.
Yeah, well, no, it's, it, Chelsea, you, you have, you seen it?
Yes.
It's, um, it is full. I, when I say a full parking lot from this, from, from our entrance.
Yeah.
From our entrance of Gateway or Soccer Drive, Soccer Drive, full, all the way, almost to the Cypress Gate. Uh, in front of Silver Lakes. All of that is full of car, both sides on, on sidewalks.
Pick kids up?
Yes, on sidewalks, on the opposite side of sidewalks and the front of sidewalks everywhere. So a few times I have seen Lee County there enforcing it, but it is dangerous. And it is the same thing happening on. The Gateway High School. They're totally blocking the traffic.
So they're driving on the sidewalks?
Yes, yes. Like we, you know.
That would be a good place to start with it.
Yeah. So that was my thing. Like if we're gonna do it and like, I would like for him to be, once you do it. Once you see, you should take it for a week, it's going to stop.
It'll fix.
So, so I guess, so that would be what my suggestion will be between the three o'clock, one is time here and then the school, whatever the time.
I just want to make one comment. I, I agree.
We are like, like warnings one week, next week tickets.
And then it's on them.
So. The sheriff still has to provide a standard level of patrol and detail to Gateway regardless if we pay for it or not.
I've heard, I've heard the story on that one.
But, but I just, we're setting.
Their problems are across eighty-two.
We're setting the precedence. I just, I just want to make that.
I called them today to do that. And I spoke with the community liaison for Gateway. That is not happening. They will be doing it if your community pays and they will do it.
Of course.
They are not, there is nothing that Officer Matthew says that they were doing or what we are repaying. Right? So, so that's what I wanted for Lee County. So I think you got good directions. And then my own, my last thing, right?
You said two. Those two.
That's, that was Lee County was one. The second, I do want a clarification on recreation maintenance. For the parks and wrecks. And you know, I'd be honored with that. I want to stick with the budget. We have those positions under the budget, under parks and wrecks. They are sold to us as parks and wrecks maintenance. They are under the district org chart as. Parks and wrecks maintenance. And I would like them to do that. If they have time to do public works, great, do it. But from having five employees and seeing all the maintenance, the lack of on parks and wrecks, I think there's an issue. So I would definitely like to keep, keep us there, what we meant to put them there, what in the budget says. Now, when budget conversation comes in a few months, if you wanted to for, or if you want to just, just the five that we have to stay here and three go there, that's fine. But as of right now, I think we should stick with what the position is and what they, or in the line budget item, what they're for. Is that what you guys think?
I don't know.
God, I need to.
I am, so here, here's, here's what's occurred in the past, the past six months is. Parks and recre, the recreation maintenance staff or like, uh, the, personally, they're maintenance staff to me. They should be able to do parks and rec stuff. And then if a sign falls over at the end of soccer drive. Those staff should, should be the same ones that should be able to go fix that, even though it's public works related.
How do you, how do you, uh, prorate them for billing purposes?
That's the million dollar question because how do we prorate the, 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 the percentage is set in the budget. In the, in the beginning of the year. That's, that's difficulty. So.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not perfect. You're just going to have to take and it has to be done.
Yes.
Because we have to put them into categories. You just pick a number that based on a two month, three month period, they spend ten percent here, ten percent here. Eighty percent here.
As part of the budget.
Gonna argue it because we don't have anything unless we do time sheets that you can go back and.
By, yeah.
Uh, read the time sheet.
So as of a month or so ago, I did, month or two maybe, I did ask those staff. Cause they were, they were concerned that they were spending an exorbitant amount of time doing public works items to, but at the end of each week. Estimate how their time was spent. Was it fifty fifty? Was it seventy-five, twenty-five?
Not gonna get anything better now.
So hopefully we'll have that data at least two or three months.
Critical item when we come to budgeting.
Yes.
Because our payments are based upon allocations of where it goes.
So that's the thing. And, and, and I'll give an example. So Pelican does not pay for the parks and rec maintenance employees. But they are doing work at Pelican.
Oh, then that, then there, there is an importance then to get that number.
So the boardwalk, right? That's, that is one item, one thing.
We had.
Second, so the.
Wait, 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 let's stay with that.
Go ahead.
They're doing something on the boardwalk in Pelican?
Yes, Keith had worked for, had worked with, um, Doug and tried to get, let me finish. There were some safety concerns, like the, the wood had splintered or popped up. And so it was just a matter of shaving some of that. Doug had tried to reach out and get vendors and pricing from that. And it, it was to the point where we couldn't find anybody to come do it for such a small. Doug had tried to reach out and get vendors and pricing from that, and it, it was to the point where we couldn't find anybody to come do it for such a small
Small.
Small task, so. Sent staff.
First time in fifteen years I've heard that, but okay.
So then, and then my.
But this was a one time thing.
It's a onesie.
Yes.
Is it, is the only thing that they did at Pelican?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. So then we, we, we would just follow up with your people that report to you, and then same thing with the concessions then, so public works were being used in there. Materials, electricity, lights, and all that, Pelican is not paying for it, because it's concession stand, but it's really not. So those are the things that I just.
It's a storage room right now.
It's a storage room, well, now it's back to just storage room.
Either way, and why would Pelican be paying for a storage room where concessions?
Because they moved public works there.
Public works.
Do you see what I'm saying? They were mixing stuff when we did not know as a board, so I don't want that, I, if they want to mix that, they can come prior to budget and say, look, we need this. Then we make that.
You pay a percentage, you pay a percentage of that.
You pay a percentage, you want it, but I, right now, I don't, you know, like, we all split it as best as we can, so that, that's my only two things that I have.
Pelican pays part of concessions?
You, you don't.
Pelican doesn't pay any.
You don't, because it was, it is a concession, but it is not a concession, it is public works, storage, slash office.
So you're saying Pelican should pay for a storage unit?
No, I think they should.
Part of storage.
No, because you already paid for being in here.
Right.
It just needs to get out of there and be here.
And as soon as the, as soon as the maintenance, as soon as the, the utilities
You already.
Maintenance building is up there, then public works can, the utilities can clear a bay, I don't know if you've been in here lately. It's full, public works can clear a bay, or utilities can clear a bay and dedicate that to public works.
Yeah, so I think you got it, you, you, you.
Yeah.
So when the public works arena, we're paying about fourteen point eight percent. This is our typical cost. For parks and wrecks, we're paying nothing.
Yeah, and you shouldn't.
And you're saying that it should be more?
No, I'm saying that.
It's the allocation of.